We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the room?
Anderson.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Tiedem.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Vlad.
Here. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Two is a CDBG Advisory Committee update. Representatives from the committee's development, the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Advisory Committee, will discuss the committee's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Christine Howes, CDBG Program Coordinator. I'm joined here today with Brenda Pollard from our CDBG Advisory Committee. We have a presentation for you and some handouts, but I will give the password to you through the pass around. I also pull it up on the screen. Thank you. So this is our annual report to the City Council for your work session today. We'll be talking about our program year 2020 accomplishments and program successes. It'll be available for questions at the end of the presentation. So the CDBG Advisory Committee, their role is to review and make recommendations to the council on adoption of our required consolidated plan. That's our five-year plan that we have to have submitted to HUD. The advisory committee meets on the third Tuesday of every month and is composed of seven members. Fifty-one percent of those members of four, four members of the advisory committee must be from our designated target neighborhoods. And the council adopted the target neighborhoods many years ago, and they're basically the core areas of Pocatello. Currently, we have three members representing the target areas with one vacant position for a fourth target area. And we also have three other representatives on the advisory committee. Each member serves a three-year term. Did you want to add anything about the, about the? So their general responsibilities include reviewing voting on sub-precipient applications for our CDBG funds. As I mentioned today, assisting in the creation of a consolidated plan. Our current plan runs from 2017 to 2021, so we will be updating that plan shortly as we run from 2022 to 2027. They also assist in the public hearing regarding community news. That's when we put out our action plans and see what projects different applicants would like to apply for. They provide project oversight and assistance by Fair Housing Act education. So program year 2022, or 2020, rather, ran from April 1st, 2020, to March 31st, 2021. Each program year runs from April to March, so current more in program year 2021. In 2020, HUD awarded Pocatello just under $450,000 in entitlement funding. We have been an entitlement community for 25 years, and that number kind of fluctuates depending on the congressional appropriation, but has been around this amount for the last several years. There's a slight increase. We also earned just over $104,000 in program income in 2020. Program income is the monies realized from our loan program. So we'll award projects loans through rehab program, and those folks will pay the loans back, and that comes in as program income. We're required to spend the program income. As soon as it comes in, we're supposed to expend it. So depending on how much to pay back in any given year, that number can fluctuate. We typically budget around $31,000 for program income. As you can see, last year was much higher than that, and that's largely due to people selling their homes and paying back any loans from projects that they were related. You can see on the slide a breakdown of the approved spending plan, and I'll go into those in more detail in subsequent slides. But essentially, the advisory committee's role is to receive applications for projects in their October meeting and assist in determining where those various projects can fit under these eligible activities, and then that comes before the council for final determination and approval. So here are some of our, our 2020 projects that fall under the housing rehab category as well as the housing creation category. As you can see, we allocated and expended just over $150,000 in housing rehab projects. And these include both loans for low to moderate income eligible applicants as well as direct grant funding for those low to moderate income that qualify. So we completed a sewer line replacement. We also completed some renovations at the 1130 East Clark home, and then various rehab grants for smaller projects, water heater replacements, HVAC, and so on. Through the affordable housing category, we awarded $5,000 to Neighborhoods Pocatello, and that was for service delivery for their income program. It's one unit that's available for a low to moderate income household. For public infrastructure improvements, $120,000 was allocated, and we were able to complete various sidewalk improvements. This included over 2,700 square feet of sidewalks that were replaced or installed, as well as ADA accessible ramps, and even the Optimus Park, which you probably drive by when coming to City Hall. So here are some photos showing some disrepair of the sidewalk, some progress in the top left photo, and then some resulting ADA, you may have accessibility and a lot in right. For public facility improvements, these are awarded to agencies that provide a primary benefit to our low to moderate income population. So we worked with several agencies to award grants for upgrades to their facilities that serve us, provide services to low to moderate populations. Aid for Friends, for example, has constructed a new shelter facility, so they received $50,000, which they'll get over the course of five years for their new shelter. Bannock Youth Foundation had various upgrades to their electrical server at their building, and then we did a couple roof replacements, as well as upgrades to foundations and parking For public services, we provide, we provide grants to these entities in order for them to conduct their services with the low to moderate income populations. So for example, Aid for Friends provides some emergency shelter services, so they've got a transportation program and provided essentially bus fares to folks who needed to get to and from appointments. St. Vincent de Paul thrift store provides direct assistance as well. And so that's for a variety of things, such as rent or utility costs or also transportation fees. Here are a few photos from our public infrastructure projects. You can see some of the electrical upgrades from Bannock Youth Foundation and two of the new roof replacements. In addition to our regular entitlement appropriation, through the Federal Cares Act, we did receive two tranches of funding for CDBG CB funds. These must be spent for COVID-related needs to the same populations that we serve with our regular CDBG funding. So we have just over $500,000 in CDBG CB funds, and to date, we've used that for rental and mortgage assistance. Approximately 43 applicants have been assisted for just over $95,000, which allows folks to basically stay in their homes, pay their rent while they're being impacted by the COVID-19 Our sister program in our Neighborhood Services Division is our Lead Safe and Healthy Homes Program. CDBG funds are used as a patch for that separate budget. Through that program, we've done 50 risk assessments on homes, and 43 of them, they've led safe. The average cost for homes is just over $20,000. The total cost to date has been $875, 655. And the grant for that was just under $1.5 million, so we've done a lot of investment into deletting several homes in the community. Based on some HUD projected numbers, the return on investment in these, the deletting of these homes is upwards of $30 to $50 million over the lifespan of the project, mostly in healthcare savings for the children that aren't protected from lead homes. Here are some images of our contractor's deletting, as well as a before and after shot of one of the homes that was approved. That concludes my presentation, and welcome any questions or comments from the council.
Questions for Christine and Linda?
I have a silly question, but I've noticed a lot of the projects that are on homes, they're that same blue color after their, do you guys have a deal on that blue paint?
I'm not sure how they pick the color post-deletting. It might just be one of those things where the more you see it, the more you like the color, and they go with it.
I'm seeing it all over town, I mean, not all over, but quite a bit, and I was just wondering, because a lot of those, a lot of the houses that I'm seeing it on are houses that are projects that were helped either through CDBG funds or like Neighborhoods or something, so I'm wondering.
Yeah, I don't know if there's-
There must be a deal out there.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a color palette that they have to choose from.
Well, I could answer that, too. I asked a painter, what's the in color? And he said gray with tints of blue or light green, so there you have it.
Okay. Thank you.
Popular trend.
Roger?
Your square feet that you did for sidewalk, the council has wanted to make that a high priority, to make the walkability factor in these neighborhoods better, because some of the sidewalks, I don't know how many linear feet that translates into, but I'm going to guess that's about two or three blocks.
Yeah, I don't know the linear footage calculation. I can return to the slide to show you the projects that were, some that give us sense.
But we know that there's several neighborhoods that just are direly impacted by the severity of the broken sidewalks, and we think that everybody should be able to walk along those walks, and the kids that live in those neighborhoods should be able to play on those walks without getting injured. And so that's one of the reasons we have that. I don't know if you've been around for our discussion on that, but it's a priority. There's several facets to it, but it really comes down to safety and beautification.
Yeah, we definitely understand that's a priority that's certainly been discussed. I'm sure, as you know, HUD funds are restricted as to where exactly they can be spent, but we're open to hearing about the specific locations and determining if they would be eligible so that we can allocate the funding as appropriate to those projects to the council.
Walk the northern end of Old Town.
We recognize that the money doesn't go as long as, as far as we wished it would when it comes to concrete and sidewalks and ramps and things like that, but that's definitely been a talking point and a discussion point for the council. We've put a lot of pressure on that, and we brought Heidi and then Chris.
Yeah, one of the things we've discussed in the past, now that we have some committee members here to hear it, is that it would be great if maybe you could discuss in your committee ways in which you might be able to help us outreach to some of those property owners, you know, because I know a lot of times you just get applications from people who know about CDBG and who, you know, come to you. But if there's a way for us to kind of identify and reach out to some of those people and let them know that it's a possibility and that we're there to help them, that would be right. We've talked a lot about, and in fact, we've got later on in our meeting today, we're going to be talking about, you know, Clark Street and Center Street, kind of the major entrances into the city, and there are a lot of properties that would probably be eligible in that area, but we just don't know if people know. And so I don't know to what extent the committee members can help us with that or help disseminate that information, but that would be really great from our perspective.
Chris?
Yeah, kind of going along with that, I would love to see kind of what your, your plan, first of all, even though it's required, thank you for having a five-year plan. I'm a big fan of knowing where, what city, you know, where you're driving to before you get in the car. I appreciate that. But I would love to see, I don't need to see the whole thing, but I would love to know like what your target areas are and so forth, because I think there are benefits to identifying critical needs all over the place, and there are also benefits to having target areas and trying to, you know, upgrade an area and move strategically through them. So I'd just love to be more informed about that. And if in those target areas, one way might be, I mean, honestly, you know, leaving a leaflet in a door is not difficult, especially when you're talking about, you know, limited areas. I mean, it really, on a nice day, you know, you can get 200 leaflets out in four hours easy. So anyway, so something as old-fashioned as that might work. And then I'm assuming that all your grant areas are dictated by HUD.
Yes.
What capacity do you have? So for example, I know that St. Vinnie's, you're going to help with the parking lot. And with all due respect to that parking lot or their blacktop area, it's not very attractive, and it actually does not, and it's, even with new blacktop, it doesn't visually really enhance that neighborhood. And, you know, with all the emotional pride that goes into feeling good about how your neighborhood looks. And so I'm wondering, and I know there's also the parking lot out by New Day, I think is going to happen, and I've talked with Terry about that. But to what degree could there be expectations, requirements, whatever the word, would be placed on those kinds of projects so that it's dovetailing with our desire to not only beautify the city, but actually by beautifying it, help create neighborhood pride? Is, I mean, to what degree, I'm assuming that you can say, hey, if you're going to re-blacktop, guess what? You know, urban tree planting is a huge deal now for a whole variety of reasons. You know, three or four flowering trees along the perimeter, you know, or a wooden fence instead of a chain link fence, you know. To what degree can you do that?
Yeah, I'll have to look into that. I know there's some restrictions on the amount, the total project cost.
Right.
Percent wise for some of our, for example, like our mobile home rehab projects. For public facilities and public infrastructure, I'll have to look to see if there's a cap.
Right.
But that's a great suggestion, and we can certainly bring that, that's almost like design review or design guidelines.
Right, I mean, kind of what our planning department does, because otherwise, you know, we lay new blacktop, and it's going to be there for 40 years, and it pretty much shuts the door on, on doing anything further. And then I think I had one more question. Oh, yeah. So I think you mentioned that your public hearings generally are around the formulation of your plan.
There are several public hearings that we have. Anytime we make an amendment to the plan, as we had at the last council meeting with those three amendments. And the public hearing process, we post, post whatever changes, and then it's, it's a month long for a review period, commenting review period, and then we conclude with the public hearing. So we have multiple plans, which require that our annual action plan, our consolidated five-year plan, and then our end-of-year plan, which is called the paper, the exact acronym escapes me. So we have public hearings for all of those processes. And then the advisory committee themselves meets monthly, and so folks can come to those if they have the opportunity.
So I know there are requirements for official public hearings, but I'm wondering if you, if you do more, but public hearings can be pretty intimidating for people. You know, they just are. And I'm wondering whether or not you have any plans to just do more informal, you know, community, neighborhood-based meet and greets, town halls, just community conversations, which would also help with getting the word out. But it also allows people who may not be experienced addressing a formal body in a formal way, you know, it might, it might give you access to a different set of voices.
That's, yeah, that's a great point. I believe our staff do some of that outreach, and obviously, the advisory committee represents the neighborhoods and brings that information back to their associations that they need. And then all the agencies they work with as well. You're right, I mean, one of those, you know, those less formal, before the body, are definitely easier conversations and also generate new ideas that we may not have thought about. So I think we also have our outreach coordinator who does a lot of one-on-one calls with folks who are applying for things like rental assistance or the housing rehab loan program. So we continue to do that and then look into other ways to improve.
I don't know how active our, I mean, I don't know that all our neighborhoods really have active neighborhood associations. I think we have very few, frankly, very active. So I'm not sure, unless they're having regular, you know, meetings with a variety of people in their neighborhood, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how functional that is right now. I mean, it's a great plan, but I'm not sure that it's actually necessarily creating the communication that, you know, might, might be available other ways. Thanks.
Thank you. Roger's got a question.
On your CARES Act funds, you've spent approximately $95,000, and you've got $406,000 left in it. Is that right?
Yes, that's the expenditures that have gone through so far. We do have a number of applications, so there's sort of a backlog of spending from that first tranche. The second tranche, we are meeting with Southeast Idaho Public Health to determine the COVID-19 needs, and then we'll determine and have the advisory committee assist in determining if those funds should continue to be spent on rental and mortgage, or if there's additional programs that are eligible under the CARES Act that we should.
Well, I was just thinking that it has been cost prohibitive for a lot of the agencies who used to build homes, to build homes. And I think if anything, we've seen in Pocatello, the affordable housing available has really been impacted by COVID. You know, it's a combination, but COVID had its, driven prices up and stuff like that. And I was just wondering, maybe if you would have, could have discussions with some of the agencies that are building some of the affordable housing? Because they, you know, if there were grants available to offset some of the expenses of building, they might be able to go forward. But it's real hard to build affordable housing when materials have skyrocketed so much, and it's hard to find some, even contractors that will do it. So I'm just thinking that maybe if we've got six years, I think I read, five years, if we had a plan to offset some of our housing issues in this affordable sector, I think that might be, some of the use of that. I'm not dictating anything that way, but I'm just saying that it seems to me like there might be an exploration that could occur in the housing area, because I know so many people who are so restricted in their housing choices right now. And we won't make a big splash, but anything that helps, helps, so.
We can definitely look into this. Thank you.
Linda?
I just wanted to comment on the idea of the more informal meetings, the meet and greets and town halls, and just make the comment that before COVID, and it wasn't you, because you're new, but that was happening quite a bit, because I know the, the year that I spent doing a lot of outreach for the census, me and lots of other people on the committee that we had, every event we were at, there was a CDBG table next to us or down the line, particularly around promoting the Lead Safe program and that opportunity to help people. So a lot of that was happening that got, you know, stopped by, by COVID. So I think it does work, and I think it is a good idea, and, you know, hopefully, when we get back to some kind of normal situation, you guys can get back to that. But I do like that kind of outreach, but I did want to say a lot of that was happening before it wasn't able to happen anymore. Thank you for everything that you're doing and the advisory committee. Thank you for focusing on the population that you focus on.
I'd just like to mention that I've been part of CDBG since it started 25 years ago, and I'm particularly excited this year because we've welcomed a new member that was in, I don't know, I think he was in Christine's position when I was first introduced to neighborhood planning, and he's really anxious to put together something that shows what's happened with CDBG in Pocatello over 25 years. And I think that will be of big impact to us as we plan towards our future, too.
Yeah, we need to see that.
One, may I ask, say one more thing? One other thing is, we'll do a lot more good by partnering with organizations around town. Everything I've listened to, I think, oh, Neighborhoods could help us with that. Oh, Salvation Army could step in there. So there's so many, if we partner, if we, you know, if we take these ideas back and partner with them, I think we'll get a lot more bang for our buck.
Especially if you need blue paint. Not kidding.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for everything you're doing. It's amazing, and it's definitely an important piece of our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
We will move to Agenda Item Number Three is a Wildlife Feeding Ordinance Update. Animal Services staff will update the council on the impacts of the ordinance number 3059 prohibiting feeding of wildlife enacted October 9, 42.
Good. Josh Hines, Shelter Director. When we originally thought about this plan and it got brought up, I had a lot of concerns with how it might affect the ACOs and what more might open like Pandora's Box. We, I, my whole plan for this was to bring charts and everything, that this is what we're doing, this is the areas that's being affected. But we've had three calls since this has been in effect, and it's all been focused on the Bannock, Bannock Highway Tech Farm area. I spoke with Jessica from Fishing, Fishing Game a few weeks ago. They're planning that since we've enforced this, they have picked up less deer on the side of Bannock, on Bannock Highway. I checked our, our calls as well, as far as us picking up deer as well or taking them, moving off the side of the road. They have declined in that area. The numbers was, I think, I had it, and I saw it, and I apologize, I didn't write it down, was around a dozen, which is far, far less than what we'd normally see. So it hasn't been a great effect on us, but as far as call-wise, but it has shown that the deer are being hit less in that area.
I'd just like to just acknowledge Councilman Tiedem and his efforts for pushing this through, and I think also Councilman Bray, but my impression at least, when I was a member of the public, was, Rick, that you were really kind of championing this, and I want to thank you for that as a person who lives in that part of town. There are many fewer deer just strolling across the road, particularly in a certain location. So thank you.
Thank you. And I think we've had a, we had a very mild winter, and that, and combined with the fires that we had on the east side, I think our habitat is much reduced on the east side. I think that's forced that resident population up over the I think that's forced that resident population up over the mountain and out, away from the city limits a little further. I think that contributes to the, to the decrease in calls and need. And the mild winter enabled a lot of those deers to kind of move out of the city and then back into the winter and become such a problem. I think they stayed away from people as much as possible. But if we have another normal winter or bad winter, I don't think the problem's over. So I appreciate what Josh has done, you know. He had calls particularly on one person. It was attracting deer across Bannock Highway.
Right, right.
And it was the same person over and over again. It just didn't get to point.
Right.
And I had calls from people and referred them to Josh, to Adlin. They jumped right out and got it done and did a great job. So it's, it isn't over now. If we could just enact a MARM ordinance.
Well, that's a whole nother.
You've got Roger?
Yeah. One of the things to add is a mild winter will increase the population somewhat. So, you know, mild winters are carrying capacities a lot greater and so we may be seeing the calm before the storm too. The main thing is we're trying to prevent the storm that comes from feeding. We can't prevent the other occurrences, but we can prevent the attraction that brings animals into neighborhoods and get some hit and compromise and safety issues too.
I agree with the mild winter. I mean, that's obvious by, I mean, I don't know if you've seen the Facebook posts recently, but they're bringing cat, you're getting more, more sites of cats are being brought down. So I believe the population is growing. It's just they're not crossing that road right now, which, you know, we eliminate, like I said, we spoke with that, with the one person. We've actually been through that neighborhood, talked to several people in that area. The majority of the people are not feeding them. They have apple trees, you know, they're not feeding them, but the deer do go down and eat those apples. That was, that was kind of, when this whole thing, like I said, when this whole thing started, there was, there was an overwhelming amount of people that were talking about Johnny Creek area that are feeding. We just haven't had any calls in that area. Everything, the, the three calls that we received has been Bannock Highway Tech Farm. So, and I, I was the, I was the first one to go out there. I received the first call and I was out there for a long time because the, the person was very unhappy, first of all, because they'd been feeding for a long time. Felt this, the, that the code was shady and that it got passed under, under cloak and dagger type situations, you know, with COVID. And I assured them, no, I, I was at all of them, that that's not how it went. And, you know, I gave that person the code, copy of the code, so they had it right then and there. Like I said, I talked to the neighbors down there and we kind of looked around because of course it happens anytime you go to someone's house and you point something out, they start pointing out everybody else's problems. So you kind of investigate and look at it and, and that's kind of what we did. But we've only, we've been called back there a couple of times. But one, the second time, we didn't find anything. And then the third time, it was some bird feed stuff. We just asked them to pick it up. So, I mean, it seems to be working. It was, you know, like I said, my main concern was the overwhelming amount of people talking about it and that we were going to get overwhelmed with these calls. But we haven't, we had three.
Well, and I, I think one of the components of this is a lot of people get very comfortable in the routine they've established and so their rationale is their rationale and they don't see what they're doing. And by saying that there is a detrimental effect on deer and people, so much that we would put this into a code, is an informative thing for people who tend to think of the deer they feed as their deer. But there, there are deer, there are the state's deer and nobody can own those deer. And somehow we, I think we're communicating that through, through this ordinance. We have to manage a resource that is everybody's.
Agreed. Claudia?
So my, so my guess, my question is, so have you been able to be effective mostly through just education? Or have you had to find anybody or?
Not had to find anybody.
Okay.
We, you know, we gave out the code, we explained to them, you know, if you continue this, you will be cited.
Right.
I can tell you the initial, my initial contact, I was yelled at for quite some time and I let her, I let her do her thing because she was upset. Been doing it a long time. I'm used to yell that.
And people think they're doing something good. They don't realize.
You know, and one particular, the one particular point they brought was that there was an injured deer apparently that's around that area that was, it was a buck, she said that was injured and only had three legs. But she was concerned about that one not eating and then passing away. And so it was kind of, same thing with like people who feed cats, they feel bad for them, right? They want to make sure that they're going to survive. And so I kind of understand why they're doing it, but we made this code, there's a code there for a reason, so you can't do it anymore. So education is all we've done. We have not issued a citation on it yet.
Good, good. That's great.
Linda?
That is really good and I want to thank you for your efforts because we talked about this a lot before we passed the ordinance. And I've always been in favor of the ordinance, but I always really wanted that emphasis to be on education rather than, you know, to be focusing on the punitive side. So it's good to hear that that is working. And I was going to say just from, you know, this is anecdotal, but from my own observation on drives and things, I've encountered a lot less deer this year, which seem to be for the reasons that you're saying, Rick. But the thing that I have noticed, which you mentioned, I wanted to ask about is the cats. What, is that for the same reasons? Like why are we getting so many cats coming into town?
The cats are going to find easy food source. They're, they're just like any other animal, they're going to go and find where, where the food is good. So they're, I mean, they could be coming into town for different reasons.
I was wondering if it's partly drought, like because we're so dry?
It, it could very well be. I'm, I'm not, I'm not an expert on, on the wildlife, on the mountain lion. But when the, when the babies and the fawns are born, those are easy pickings for mountain lions. So when the mountain lion, if they're, if they're herding and they have, they have those fawns in those areas that are staying in those areas and they're not being pushed up over the mountain or the mountain lions are going to come down, they're going to search for food. So as the animals move in, so will the predators.
So are feral cats.
Yeah. And that's, yeah, that's, that's true. I've been on many, many calls where we've had mountain lion sightings and we go up and we find feral cats. That's, that's the prey.
They're easy pickings. So how about trap neuter and release for mountain lions?
I'm all in, but I'm going to need some more commitment, some more training. I'm all in, let's do it.
Actually, there are cities in the Northwest who actually hire people with dogs to chase the animals, the cats, and put them back up in the hills. And they, they, by doing that, they habituate them to a different environment because they're, they feel preyed upon locally. And, you know, that might, if we keep getting the occurrence of cats, we might have to think about some of that.
And I really think, I don't think, and this is my personal opinion, we, we get cats throughout the year. We, we, I mean, we all seen the news, right? We see them. I think with social media, we see them a little bit more. I don't know if it's increased, but you've just seen a lot more media about it because it's Facebook and all those things, that people see them in their backyard and they record them, where maybe before they weren't.
Fish and Games relaxed some of the rules and that may have an impact.
Yeah.
Well, we had one living in my neighborhood in the cul-de-sac and it took care of all the neighborhood cats. And, uh, and all of them, all the, yeah, they were all like house cats that would just go outside. Yeah. There's no cats in my neighborhood anymore. And, and then I was walking my dogs out in the hill, foothills one day and I, I was kind of up high and I looked down the trail and I see this really long tail. And I was like, oh! So I'm like grabbing my little dog and I'm like, we gotta go. Because I didn't want my big dog to have to tangle with that thing because it was very obvious to me what it was. But yeah, it was, there, there's definitely more of them.
Yeah. And, yeah.
I thought you were talking about cat videos on social media. You're talking about the pictures of the cats.
Actual mountain lions, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was like, yeah, I post those.
Yeah, we're seeing more of those too. Yeah.
Well, the mountain lion population is much higher than the wildlife objective that Fishing Game has and that's one of the reasons they lifted their female cat restriction.
Yeah.
And I think that's going to be reduced over the next few years, most of the consternation of the cat hunters. They're the only ones who really kill cats. The average hunter never sees a cat. If you're hunting with dogs, if you're hunting cats, you're going to have the choice to take a cat. That's, that's been part of it.
Okay. Any other questions? Josh, thank you. Thanks for the update. Hopefully it continues to go this good. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item four, open space management update. Staff will update the council on interagency plans related to open space planning and management, including preventing unauthorized trail construction through extensive public engagement and development of a sustainable regional trail system. Unauthorized trail construction has been identified to negatively impact water quality, water, wildlife habitat, and other open space resources.
Thank you, Council. Hannah Sanger, Science and Environment Division Administrator. Here today to talk to you in the beginning of a process. So there might be a whole lot of questions I just can't answer because we are in the very beginning. So ask them, but I might say in six months, we'll come back to you with an answer. Also here to talk about one of sort of my favorite things where we're in the beginning of doing a lot of visioning, which I love doing, and we're also focused on ways to protect water quality. So, which is what I work on for the city. So just a little bit of background, this effort most recently started about a year ago between the City of Pocatello, BLM, who's here in the audience, and, sorry, US Forest Service, so Parks and Rec and the Environmental Division from the city. And at the beginning of COVID, we started meeting at Trailheads outside and we'd talk about issues on our open space around Pocatello and what, we had new staff from the Forest Service, so part of it was getting them up to speed and just trying to understand what, what issues we could work on together that made sense. Because our open spaces, our public land abuts one another, the trails cross from one to another and back and forth, water sheds cross, all of these wildlife habitat. So pretty imperative. We are on the same page and making sure, figuring out, even though we have very different processes and we have very different regulations between us and even within the two federal agencies difference, that we've got the similar goals. We're all really interested in, you know, promoting recreation, we're all interested in water quality, improving water quality and wildlife habitat. And so what can we do together to improve it and build on efficiencies so we're not, you know, repeating the same thing where one person could do a lot of work? Whoops. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Or the wrong one, sorry. Ha-ha! There we go. Oh, it's much prettier.
Before we get going, maybe you can handle the question. Make it multitasking.
Okay. Okay.
When we had some conversation about the trail system that would be going on the east side, the landowners were very adamant about the impact on their land. Now I would just say that I think if we can help this converge to alleviate some of the concerns and give some assurances to landowners that a planned trail system can take people away from crossing their property rather than having more occurrences there, that, that would be a good dimension. And I, I just thought I'd mention that because that was the first thing that came up is how we were really put upon by several of the landowners after our discussion.
Yeah, yeah. And I will, we'll get to some of that and certainly also have BLM here who can talk about some of the, the planning they've done up in that area with, and public engagement. So that's it. So related to that, you know, we have a vision, this is really small, which is intentional, of an interconnected trail system. These are all of our existing trails, which may or may not be authorized, and I'm probably missing another 10% on city land, federal land, state land, private land in our area. So just to orient you a little bit with my cursor, you know, this is the City Creek area, super dense. This is that Pioneer Ridge area, east of Satterfield and here, I guess actually is right there, is that Pioneer Ridge system. We have China Peak area, Black Rock there, Scout Mountain Trails here, and then again, City Creek and Trail Creek. So lots and lots of trails, some of which have travel management plans, so some of which are authorized, some of which, you know, we haven't looked at. So the city, we have gullies and we've never said, should this trail, should there be a trail here? Should there not be a trail here? BLM, some of their travel management planning is from the eighties. So there's, there's a lot of catch-up work that needs to be done in terms of, on public land that exists, whether it's city, state, or federal, determining what is an authorized trail and going through our required processes to do that. You know, part of this vision of connecting these trail systems, as sort of Bruce Lenick talked to you about a month ago, you know, also we have a water trail we're in the process of developing that's running through the center of Pocatello. We have Greenway Trails that we've been working on connecting for 20 years and they're slowly getting there. And then we have this huge smattering of land agency managers. So there's tribal land, there's Forest Service, there's BLMs, there's ISU, there's Fishing Game, there's county land, city land, and a lot of private land in here. And so a lot, a lot to be worked out. And then I don't have layers for this yet, but, you know, we have lots of streams feeding in here, so water quality concerns and then wildlife habitat. You know, where is our mule deer habitat, summer range, winter range? What about sharp-tailed grus, grouse? Are there any other, is there any other wildlife that we want to protect and we want to map and know where their habitat is that would be impacted by trails? So these are things we are all trying to work on together and figure out how do we, how do we collectively manage our trail system to support these common shared goals of wildlife habitat, recreation use, water quality improvements while, you know, we have very different processes. So some challenges, some of these trails that are on public land, you know, in order to get to them, you need to go through private land. So, you know, what, what is the process for acquiring private land? What land can be acquired? What can't? Where can we get easements? Where are we not going to get an easement for, you know, never or 50 years? User group coordination. So everybody who uses these trails, coordinating their use, coordinating how we manage how they use these trails. We all do it individually, but also, you know, the public generally sees the public landowners as one entity often. And we saw that in the Pioneer Ridge where city, or is it BLM? It's hard for the public to make the differentiation. So coordinate, a lot of communities have a single entity that provides some of that user group coordination and does facilitate some of that activity, that outreach that requires funding, maintenance requires funding. So if we think about all these trails, we're maintaining some of the authorized ones, but if the unauthorized ones on city land are also supposed to be maintained, well, that's, that requires a lot of effort. And user groups really like to build new trails. They aren't quite as engaged often in maintaining existing ones. And then we have a lot of trails that are being constructed that are unauthorized and probably miles being created every year. And some of them are fantastic trails, they connect to important other trails. And some of them are really poorly designed and have significant erosion issues. And all of them sort of add to our collective maintenance burden and certainly are not designed thinking about the whole trail system. So how do we go forward in terms of developing a So how do we go forward in terms of developing a vision? So the general planning process is, you know, usually you do an existing conditions inventory and assessment. So we've been mapping our trails. Where we are now is mapping trails. You look at your natural resources and so make sure you understand your water quality issues, your wildlife habitat, all of that. So the city is hoping to do that. We have funding from ISU to help support an intern this summer to work on mapping all of our natural resources on our open space and assessing the condition of that. BLM and Forest Service generally do that through environmental assessments processes. And then we have other infrastructure. We have stormwater facilities in our open spaces. There are water lines that go through these. There are power lines and gas lines, so understanding what else is there. And starting to understand what the stakeholders want, what all the user groups want, what are our goals, objectives, desired outcomes, and ultimately, you know, using that to develop a trail map, a preliminary interagency regional trail map of our, for our area. That would then need to be adopted by each agency. So we as a community can't say, "BLM, this is your new trail system." We can say, "Hey," we as a community can say, "Hey, city, BLM, Forest, Fish and Game, et cetera, here's our proposed regional trail system. Will you consider it and go through your environmental assessment process and adopt it as you can?" And that can take years. So places where your last trail, your last travel management work was done in the 80s, it's going to take a lot longer than if you just did something a few years ago and you're able to work on it a lot faster and you have more recent data. So for the city, this will involve updating our City Creek Management Plan, so it would include all of our open space. And then I know Planning Department is interested in updating the open space plan, which is sort of a preservation of open space acquisition as we continue to develop. And so I can't remember what this picture is, but... So today's focus, though, is unauthorized trails. So here we have zoomed in on City of Pocatello property up City Creek. So in the top right is sort of, there's Grant Street, LDS Church, Centennial Park is down here. And then this is all of City Creek that the city owns. The Women's Prison is right here. What's in green are our authorized trails from the City Creek Management Plan and some trails we've authorized since. What's in red are unauthorized. And what's in orange are actually, they're on private land. Now, some of these were constructed probably in the 1950s, you know, these trails that are red, but a lot of them in the last few years. We've just had a lot of trails multiplying. And so we are trying to get a handle on it. And our dirt is really easy to dig in. It's really easy to build new trails. It's really easy to hang out in a parking lot after a ride and talk with your buddy about where a new trail should be. And then in a couple of weeks, especially if you're like much younger, much fitter, and much more energetic than me, you can go out and build it. You can go ride for two hours and then spend three hours digging trails. And that's a really fun activity for a head full of people. So how do we authorize trails? Just a little background. So at the federal level, they do travel management planning. So a whole collection of trails will be authorized through that. So the Forest Service did the Caribou Travel Management Plan in 2005. Everything in the Scout Mountain area, they went through and said, "This is going to be an ATV trail. This is a mountain bike trail," and said, "This is where you could use this kind of equipment." BLM in 1995, they did something similar at Chinese Peak, Black Rock Canyon. So that's a pretty long time ago. 1980 was the last review of the, for Pocatello off-road vehicle designation in our area. And the city, we did something in 2009 for City Creek. So that's a, that's a sort of a big process. We often hear a lot about it. And then individually, say, you know, it takes a lot of work to do one of those, obviously, since we don't do them very often. We can authorize trails singularly. So Sterling Justice Trail on the Forest Service was authorized in 2012, so it went through a whole, NEPA is the National Environmental Policy Act. It requires a whole public outreach, environmental assessment, big public process. So they did that in 2012. The BLM, in order to put in an access point down at the Gap, they went through the same process down at the Gap in 2020. And then for the Pioneer Ridge Trail up, which is what was talked about at the last meeting, they went through that in 2020 as well and sort of were bringing that to our environmental fair and such. So those are the individual trail authorizations through the NEPA process. And then the city has had a process where it's just been by city staff. And so we've done some additions to the City Creek since 2009. So any questions on that process? Any questions for BLM also while they're here on their process related to trail authorization? Before I move forward. Okay. So moving forward and why am I here really is what does a regional interagency trail system require? You know, it requires that all of us agencies buy in and say, "Yeah, we're going to adopt this proposed map. We're going to, you know, say, we're going to try our best to adopt it. You know, we'll have to go through the environmental assessment and some things might change, but you know, here's what the community wants and we're going to move forward on that." In order to do that, you know, we need the community to not continue to construct unauthorized trails. I mean, that's, it's going to really, we can't be working towards a regional trail system and have it circumnavigated by unauthorized trails being created that contribute to declines in water quality and wildlife habitat. If we're going to work forward towards this interagency trail map, we need to, number one, stop unauthorized trail construction. We're also going to have standards for trail and open space management. We have some, but you know, what makes a good trail? You know, does it loop? You know, some nice things like that. How wide is it? What kind of use is allowed on it? How steep is it? Is it so steep it's going to erode? Is it maintainable? You know, what, so just thinking about how many trails can we maintain? How close is it to the city? What kind of density do we want? All of that we're going to have to think through and that's going to contribute to this mapping. So in order to make that passable, some next steps, and this is really an update for you of what we're, where we're going, is we want to stop unauthorized trail construction this summer. So we don't want to have three more miles of trail before we start working on this trail map. So our plan is to do a big outreach blitz, starting in May. So hence this meeting right now, really, and working with the bike shops, the user groups, Facebook, social media, and having the community help us stop unauthorized trail construction. On city property, we have the ability to enforce it through our Parks Code. And so we are not asking the police to spend time patrolling. So that would be the community letting us know something's happening, staff in parks, outdoor rec, and environmental documenting it if we don't have enough documentation from the public, and then turning that over to the police and the legal department to carry out a penalty as possible. Yes?
Are you going to be doing a presentation to the high school mountain biking team? Because I'm certainly not trying to insinuate that the team is doing any of that unauthorized trail building, but I think maybe some of the people who are coaches or people on the team know the people who are.
That is a, that's a great, yes. So welcome, welcome groups to reach out to. And so I think we're going to be doing, yes, that's a great, I hadn't thought of that group.
What group?
The high school mountain bike team. Yep. The bike shops and just trying, trying to get the word out. We really do not want to, you know, go through the enforcement process, but we want to make sure we can. And if we have to, we will. It's a lot of work to document it and carry it out and it's up to a misdemeanor penalty.
Claudia?
The Satterfield Bike Trails, is that city property or is that private property?
That is private property until you reach BLM. So where the proposed, so where the proposed, BLM's proposed Pioneer Ridge Trails, so the mountain bike trail that exists is on private property. Mountain bikers ask BLM to put it on BLM property because it's flat as well and it's won't be developed. And so there's some of the Satterfield Bike Trails that connect to, they connect to BLM and so you don't know when you've reached that line unless you stare at your map.
I walk my dogs up there fairly often through the trails and I noticed one day it wasn't there and then one day there's like a paintball park in there.
Okay.
Huge, huge pits, you know, and I mean, I could see how fun it would be, you know, but then there's like barricades and, but it's just like, and it just happened like overnight.
Isn't it amazing how it passed?
And like, wow, but somebody, I mean, those are big holes. And I mean, if little kids did not dig that with a shovel, somebody had to go back there with some kind of diggy thing, but whatever.
I think that, that one is on private property.
Diggy thing.
Mechanical shovel thing.
Yes. It is amazing, though, what you can do with a shovel. I do not, energetic people with a shovel can dig a hole pretty fast, but that is on private land.
That is private, okay.
So that, that is a big part of it is we're seeing up City Creek, there's a whole chunk of land everybody thought was city property. It is private land and people are watching homes, you know, cross their favorite trail and trying to figure out how to reroute their trail, you know, still on private land. So we're going to be grappling with that.
There's a lot of outrage currently in the Trails Group on Facebook about that very issue, the people that didn't know that that was private and are making statements about, you know, how dare they take away our trails, but it's like it never was ours.
Yeah, yeah. So you know, we're, I think, you know, as you look at, look at a better, this picture here, and you can't really see, but you know, like right here, this is all, there's a whole chunk here of private land. And everything lot that's here is private land and here is private land. And so as we continue to develop as a recreation community that does a lot of mountain biking and we continue to build homes in the hills, this seems like a really important time to get a handle on where we want to go. And so it's part of what the Land Trust is working on for the city is also helping prioritize some of these areas that should be protected and coming up with a plan to work with ruling landowners for access.
Rick?
I just wonder, you've talked a lot about bicycles. What about the horse groups, the motorized groups?
Yep.
The runners? Are all of those groups going to be engaged in this process?
Yes, yes.
Is the damage caused by one group more than another?
It depends on your perspective. So you know, if you're a mountain biker, it's not mountain bikes, it's horses. And if you're a horse, it's ATVs. But it depends on the amount of use. You know, a single horse rider can do a lot of damage in wet conditions, but you know, and 10 runners in the right conditions can do a lot of damage as well. And so it really, you know, motorized use can inflict damage a lot faster than anybody else just because of the power. So it's, it's everybody and so it's going to be a big community effort. The driver right now has been these, just the growth in mountain biking here is driving this sort of awareness that we're having a lot of unauthorized trails constructed. It used to be, you know, it was the playground for a few people on their mountain bikes and now, you know, we have a high school mountain bike team. And that's a big change.
Is the Blue Ribbon Coalition involved?
We, we will, yes. So we have not reached out to any, we have not started reaching out to the groups about this sort of plan. We're in the early stages of just collecting the data and the next step is to start to do that outreach. So you're really didn't like, wanted to do this later, but didn't want to surprise you. And so we're playing a bit of chicken and egg of, and we don't have our data and so we're, we're in this very early stages. But we've all been engaged. I know BLM, Forest, City with Blue Ribbon Coalition and about all of these issues in the past. And so whenever I write a grant, I reach out to the Blue Ribbon Coalition and talk to them, so.
Roger.
I think this is really good that you're being proactive. I saw some young men going up past my house. I live up by on the west bench over here. There's a trail system. They were on e-bikes. And I really think these e-bikes, they've got ranges that vary and based on your conditioning. I don't have any idea of it. I would think that you can get an assist where you really need it and you can muscle it out in a lot of other places. But I really think that's going to be an explosion. I happen to be looking at the whole thing. E-bikes are, like other bicycles, are pretty much on pay now and wait to get it later.
Yeah, and so that's one where the Forest Service and the BLM treat e-bikes differently. So are they allowed on motor, mountain bike trails or not? And so we're...
And there's levels, you know, like you could have a 750 watt one that can go on a lot of places with the same bike. They have a capability of 1,000 watts at the same, you know, just changing something, but they're not allowed.
Yep. Yeah, right, right now it's just, is it an e-bike?
So we have Chris and then Claudia.
Yeah. First of all, Hannah, again, congratulations on having a really logical, well-thought-out collaborative process. That's pretty standard from your department, but much appreciated. So I'm, I think, and you alluded to this, I think it's the educating people about unauthorized trails is a bit like the wildlife situation. You know, they, they just think, "Well, it's just bare land. I'm out here doing this." And they're thinking through their lens. And so, you know, obviously I think that's an important part and it might even be that educational signage might be helpful because people who care about the land, if they understand that they're actually not doing something harmless, half of those people might say, "Whoa, didn't know," and stop. And then you also mentioned the potential need at some point for a, like a, I'll call it a trail coordinator. And so I was wondering if there's, if there is any viability in terms of partially funding that person, because we have a variety, well, at least two departments, your department, Parks and Rec, where we already obviously have staff doing some of this. And I'm wondering whether or not that person could partially be funded out of the time that is already being paid for by staff in those two departments. And I don't need an answer on that, but it's just a thought.
Something for us to look at, yeah. We, we are going to need to be very creative on that funding.
And then I was also, I'm still, I'm trying to kind of totally get a handle on what the comprehensive plan does and doesn't include. But it appears to me that, that within city limits, I mean, that there is some connection here. Am I right on?
Yep. We will definitely reference this study and what they're working on and include a lot of their recommendations in that conference.
Okay, great. Thanks. And then, golly, quite a while ago, you updated us on the fact that there are a number of, I don't remember if it was, I think it was national parks, but anyway, there was, there was a pretty big chunk of money. I want to say 95 million, but I don't remember if that's...
A land and water conservation... A land and water conservation fund.
Yes, yes, yes. Anyway, so I'm just wondering whether or not where, where the allocation of those funds kind of is right now and whether or not something, an effort like this might be considered a shovel-ready type plan for some of that funding.
Yes, so we could use some of that funding to acquire, acquire land. And we're still hearing guidance from the state on exactly what it can be used for and not, but the federal guidance provided so far indicates that yes, acquiring property for recreation would meet, meet that, or wildlife protection or water quality would all meet those guidelines and especially once we've, you know, started to prioritize what are important pieces to acquire from landowners.
And would signage, community education, trail stabilization, would, would, does it sound as though any of those might be?
Those can, they can be part of, part of your package for sure. So they, that money can go towards park development of any kind as well. So it can go towards, you know, a playground as well.
Claudia?
So I'm assuming that the Forest Service and BLM has rules about building on, people building unauthorized trails. Do we have an ordinance?
We do. So we have, so the BLM has really specific rules and they are fantastic with enforcement up on particularly, a number of people have gotten caught going up on the east bench of China Peak area. And so they have a process where you get fined $100 for this, $200 for this, and they have a dedicated law enforcement officer who does that. Same thing with Forest Service, game have dedicated law enforcement officers. Our dedicated law enforcement officers are not dedicated to our open space management and unauthorized trail.
But we do have an ordinance.
But we do have an ordinance, so it's in the Parks Code 12.36. Yes, okay, that's, I knew I should have put that in here. And so we can use that to enforce unauthorized trail construction. And we've talked to police and we've been talking with legal department about that process and what it might look like. So our hope is we have one, one really good one, one or one max, or none, but zero to one this summer would be great and just to, but really our hope is that signage, talking to people and having the community police. So that was a big lesson I heard from Teton Valley is they, the community police is there. They're about 20 years ahead of us in terms of where they're at, but they said if we want to have a regional trail system that the Forest Service and the city and the county are all working on and trying to build us new trails and trail amenities, we're gonna jeopardize that by constructing new trails and we're gonna have things shut down. And so the community is, is there enforcing agency. And so that, that's ultimately where we want to get.
Linda?
I, I am really excited by this and want to thank you for the work. I know it's in the early stages, but I think this is so important to do. And I was gonna comment from social media, one of the things that has become painfully obvious is that it's very confusing to the general public, you know, not, not only who owns what land, but like who has the responsibility for that land and for managing trails and for authorizing or not, you know, or getting rid of unauthorized, all of that is confusing to people. And when something happens, you know, like some kind of problem on a trail or something, people just want a response and they want help and they don't want to hear, oh, well, that's not our responsibility, you need to go to so-and-so. And then it turns out, no, it's not BLM, it's Forest Service. And they just feel like they're getting a runaround. So I think this kind of collaboration and maybe ultimately having, you know, one entity or, or at least one plan that involves all the entities and they're all bought into that, I think will go a long way to addressing that issue and that kind of confusion and just making people feel better about, you know, that when something, when they have an issue that they, that they get the help they need and they get a response and that we are working together and not just giving them a runaround. So I love that and want to congratulate you on that. The other thing I did want to ask is you just mentioned, and I think it was the first time I heard you mention, but county. So I know this is very collaborative and you talked in the beginning about, you know, BLM and Forest Service and all these other entities. How much is the county going to also be involved?
We are, we are working that through. So we have, you know, it was BLM, Forest and City for about six, eight months. And now we started bringing in the land trust and we brought in fishing game and we brought in the, you know, first we had rec folks and me, and then we had law enforcement officers and now we're getting the PR people like Logan involved. And we've started bringing in the county and ISU and-
Other cities too, like Chabik?
Chabik and ITD, you know, there's a stormwater component to it, so I've been talking about it with my stormwater co-permittees. So we're all, everybody's, we're, we're ramping up really fast, but it's a really slow process because, and we're gonna be in fits and starts as everybody circles back to their respective administrations and talks it through and thinks through, you know, if we have this trail and it's an authorized trail, what are our legal liabilities, you know, and do it, what are the issues with landowners and do I want to deal with that? And so we're, yes, everybody is getting engaged, but I, I would say they're not as far along in thinking about this and, but we're, we're working towards having a whole lot of logos on here. But I, I don't have authorization, probably put all their logos on here yet or we're getting there.
I also wanted to just comment on, and back to an issue that Roger brought up earlier, I, I just happened to run into Corey White last night and he's very involved, I know, in this whole process. And he was talking about that having a well-managed system actually alleviates a lot of the problems that homeowners, you know, the concerns that they express, I mean, property owners, because people are gonna access public land one way or another. But if you don't provide the parking and the toilets and the access, you know, through some public land, they're gonna be going across private property and doing maybe some damage and things like that. So that all of these efforts actually do address a lot of those problems and concerns and actually make them better. So that I think was something to, to take, I mean, I'm sure you're considering that, but I, I think that's a good part, a benefit of this program as well.
Well, and that's important, that's partly probably why you heard from so many homeowners the other day is, you know, the China, the Pioneer Ridge area, you know, that BLM doesn't have a travel management plan there. It's not, there's no defined public access. So, you know, landowner confusion as it is now is, is pretty fraught. And there's, there's a lot of trails that go across, I mapped a lot of trails and then got them from everybody and been staring at that map a lot. And there's a lot on private land, whether they're created by the landowner, I don't know if somebody created the trail from their back door onto BLM or if it, you know, is left over from before the subdivision was there. You know, so a lot is unknown, but certainly that the legacy issues are confounding us and helping drive the need for this. And we're seeing that on our city property as well. So with that, our next steps is one, big media blitz coming up, okay? And that's starting in May. We're trying to figure that out now. And we're all doing this sort of on the side, trying to collaborate on the side. And then City will do this existing conditions assessment. ISU has, is gonna help support that. And, and then, once we get some funding for a facilitator, we're gonna start to bring the public into this process. I don't have a time there because we need to get the money. We need, you know, it's not just a city issue, so we're gonna, City and the feds and everybody else and we need to find, make sure we have time as staff to work on this. Obviously, we can't tell people not to build unauthorized trails and then not work on this, so we're, we're motivated to move forward.
And all of this should be through May? I mean, you'll start this process in May?
We'll start this in May, yeah, 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 yeah. We're not gonna finish it in May.
Can imagine.
Aren't you superwoman? I know. So with that, any questions? And I know we have John Banks and BLM here as well.
I have a question for BLM. How active are you in your process of mapping trails in general?
Right now, not very active. Just, just to be honest, in the last several years, administration priorities have focused on access to public lands for hunting and fishing and other recreational opportunities. And these travel management plans are viewed as closing trails because you go in and designate what's open, what's closed. So the, the funding hasn't been coming down to, to, to develop any new travel plans the last several years. That may change, may not. The ones that Hannah showed, you see, they were trail construction projects, like one project being constructed where a travel management plan looks at a large area and addresses all the trails within, you know, the most recent one we did was down in Curly. It was, it was all the public land south of I-86 and west of I-15, all the way down to the Utah border and over to the, so it was a huge area, hundreds of miles of trails. And within that, a lot were designated and a lot worked. So that was viewed, you know, that's the perception is road closures come with travel plans and that did fit the administrative priorities for access to public lands.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for the update and we'll look forward to the next one. Thank you very much. We will move on to Agenda Item Five, the Center and Clark Street Sidewalk Assessment. Staff will update the council on current grants that have been applied for and/or awarded to the city to improve the accessibility along Center Street and Clark Street. Before we get going on that though, let's take a few minute break. Real quick, we've been going about an hour and a half, so let's take a break for a few minutes. Okay, thank you for joining us after the break.
Chris or?
What?
Who's gonna be seated first? The race is on.
All right, thank you for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and continue with Agenda Item Number Five is Center Street, Center Street, Center and Clark Streets Sidewalk Assessment. Staff will update the council on current grants that have been applied for and/or awarded to the city to improve the accessibility along Center Street and Clark Street. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. Mayor Quell, Public Works Development Engineer. I also would like to recognize Jeff Mansfield and Maggie Clark with me here today. And thank you for this opportunity before, to come before you today to present an update on the squirrel and crow fighting in my neighborhood. I just wanted an interesting topic too. I thought we'd switch. Anyway, back to the Clark and Center sidewalk project and the updates of, of what we're doing. I've got this structured to, in, in three different areas. I'd like to first start with the, some background on sidewalks and the curb and gutter issues that we have here and how we follow things. Traditionally, in the new developments, sidewalk is placed at the time the building structure is actually applied for and put in. So that's in our newer developments. Under the Pocatello Municipal Code 12.04.030, for existing lots and parcel, it is the owner of said real property, the duty to construct, repair and replace the sidewalk. So that's what our, our code states, meaning that the sidewalks within their frontage is the responsibility of the homeowner or the property owner. The City of Pocatello Public Works Design Principles and Standards in Section 500.06.04 for our curb and gutter. We outline the process for new construction within areas that aren't in subdivisions and how that, how that is to be placed or what we have is a real covenant at times that delays it because it's not advantageous to place out in the middle of nowhere just a section of curb gutter and sidewalk, the whole street and everything has to be designed. And then the Engineering Department does conduct code enforcement protocols. However, we don't actively go out seeking for those properties that don't have sidewalks and require those to go in at that time, partially because of manpower, this takes a lot of time and effort. The other thing is there's a lot of cost that's imposed upon the property owners at this time too, that's never budgeted or planned for. So I'll go to Section Number Two. Here's a few examples of the efforts that the city and that we've been involved in over the years of how we've done sidewalks and curb and gutter projects. In 2002, 2001, the last sidewalk was placed under an L, local improvement district, an LID, that was LID 117, 118 in the Moreland and Richland area. Since then, well, and prior to that, we did, tried to do one or two a year and we did fairly well there at that time. However, rules changed in the LID process on the state level and the time consumption in there and then fronting the money also to try to come up because the cost of sidewalks, as the mayor mentioned in the, the other presentation, the cost is, is growing to be able to put these in. So we've kind of moved away from that. We had the Roosevelt-Alameda Project that was broke into four phases. That project was in between Yellowstone and Jefferson and Alameda and Oak. And those four phases, we were able to go through there, fill in all the blanks and put in the sidewalk and curb and gutter in that area. And that was funded through the Fred Meyer Construction Project. I can't remember the details. I tried to find the file last night so I could give you more, but that file has gone missing. It's after this year, so.
That was part of the TIFF association?
That was part of that TIFF and that project. There was a million dollars that was set aside and that's what took, and we were able to do a lot of work in that neighborhood behind there, so that is correct. From 2009 to 2017, we've worked with the Community Development Block Grant Fundy, the CDBG. We were able to place sidewalk on First, all the way down Second to Fredericale in different phases and then on both sides of Fredericale also. This way we were able to connect the community more to Ross Park is what we were trying to do and that. So that took a three or, three or four phases, but over time we were able to do that. Also, over the years, we've been able to find funding in that through safe routes to school. We were able to, in 2013, for instance, Indian Hills School along Bannick Highway did a quite a, an extensive project there. Also, you should know that we are working right now on just a small 200-foot section with Intermountain Gas and with the city forces. Intermountain Gas is gonna pay for the curb gutter and some sidewalk along their property to improve that, so we have right up to the school crossing at Indian Hills too. And that hopefully will happen this year. We've done work at ISU and other schools. Up around Franklin, we did work there with city forces, down through on Terry, Buckskin there. Another one is the grant fundings that you've been seeing, that we've been getting for the ITD routes. We've done quite a few on Fourth and Fifth and here in front of City Hall over the last few years. Another big one I'd like to point out is the city makes efforts on our own properties as best we can and working with the departments and engineering to, to facilitate sidewalks and walkability. walkability on our own facilities. For instance, a few of them is that we replaced about 300 feet of sidewalk along that had been deteriorated of Mountain View Cemetery through the Parks Department. We made sure that we had the sidewalk placed on the properties that were surplus that we sold last year with the Street Department and Sanitation Department before they left our control. We placed the sidewalk in the back here along Seventh Street that was deteriorated in that a few years ago also. We were able to place the sidewalk along Sherman with CDBG funds and two ADA ramps along Eighth on Optimus Park here during the Seventh and Sherman Bus Stop Project. So we try to go outside and find the other funding in conjunction with projects. And there is a project I'm going to put on your radar that we'd like and get support from council. Would like to work with the Golf Course and Parks Department to be able to get sidewalk along Bannick Highway, all along the golf course there. That is one of those properties that I think would be beneficial also, especially where a couple of years ago, you know, we've had some accidents and there was a 17-year-old at that time that I knew, one of my neighbors, and he got hit by a truck there, so if there's that. So anyway, so that was a side note. Now, let's get to our current efforts that, why we were here in the first place. First is the grants that we've got on the ADA ramps and also for Clark and Center Street. First, the ITD, I'd like to give just an update. In 2018, we started applying for these ADA grants through ITD on Fourth and Fifth. It has to be used on the state system, however, it's been a great tool. We, they're generally about $60,000 and we've got three consecutive grants at this time. Last year, we put in, that was our first year of construction because it takes time. We were able to put in 11 ADA ramps at that time on Four, on Fifth. This year, we'll be doing 11 more ramps on Fifth and Fourth Street. In 2002, or 22, we have the grant that's been accepted for construction on eight addition, or 10 additional ADA ramps. And then for future, we have eight in for application right now, eight ADA ramps for FY 23 and 24. So, and you'd say, why are the ramps going down? We were already locked in on the 11 ramps and so forth, but we're finding that, so that we don't have to expend city funds and we can just use the ITD ramp funds, that the, these ramps are costing between $7,500 to, and some of the bids that came in this last time, up to $10,000 a ramp on a corner. And it's because of, a lot of that is because of the ITD regulations and the standards and stuff like that, which is the same as the city's, but when you throw in that mix with the Davis Bacon and all that, and the wages, the prices raise. Just a little bit of there. And currently, the 5310, which is the funding that Clark and Center Street are coming from, that is the Elderly Individuals and Individuals with Disability Program. We've been able to leverage some of this money because it all doesn't have to go into the program with the buses and that that Schuyler has there at PRT, but we're able to leverage some of that money because of the access and route accessibility to bus stops. So that's how Center and Clark comes in and played into this. So for instance, Clark Street, the pedestrian improvement, we were awarded that, that grant. This will update 14 intersections, install 200 feet of sidewalk. We'll have to place some necessary on a few of them because of the grades up in that area. We'll have about 200 feet of little retaining wall and that to, to make the sidewalk possible. We have nine alley approaches also that we will be working on, and that will be from 18th to First Street, minus the Fourth and Fifth of the state routes because we're going to utilize their money and not the money that we're getting here, so. That project is estimated to be $376,623 and that will be going out to bid in the next couple of months and construction this year. And most of that work will be on the northerly side of Clark Street. We can't do both sides, so that'll be on one side, so at least have accessibility from top to bottom the best we can from, on one side. Now, the Center Street Pedestrian Improvement Grant application, we will know if we are successful in that, getting that grant this fall. And that project, if we are successful, will encompass ADA ramps on five corners, will stop, install 850 feet of six-foot wide sidewalk and improve eight alley approaches and other approaches along there. And that will be the located between 19th Avenue and 13th Avenue on the southerly side of Center Street again, so that we can try to, because most of Center has it up, but at 13th, we start losing it, so that's where that is. And if successful, we'll have a 2023 construction and the cost of that project is $219,595 plus we'll have to have the city's 20% match that will encompass that if we, when we get that there.
Mayor, when did you say that would happen? If we get that?
If we get that, that would be a next year, our 2023 construction.
2023?
Yeah, because we get it, we'll finish the design. We've got it preliminarily laid out, but it takes some other times and then when the money and the funding becomes available.
Well, we got, right?
If we have shovel-ready projects, that's what I'm hearing, going to use $2 trillion or whatever it is, infrastructure, because could that work for sidewalks that are on major streets and stuff?
It's possible that that, because that is part of our infrastructure. So we do have other plans, like I said, we've got them in concept to maybe 25%, but we can work on, on some areas specifically because again, we know that there are areas with a lot of dilapidated and deteriorated sidewalks in this town. So if there's some areas that council has specific, because the staff, we go out, drive it every day and it's everywhere. So we'd need to be, you know, specific and probably strategic on how we do that.
And, you know, everybody's saying this is a great grab bank, but it seems to me that those who are most prepared are going to be most likely to catch attention.
Exactly.
And so if we are doing different things for infrastructure, and I don't know if you have to have it completely shovel-ready or can be ready in a timeframe, if it can live in concept to plan.
One thing good.
So you know, council, we are working with our lobbyists in DC. We're on the front end of this so that we, we've got some requests in. We need to probably work on some sidewalks and things like that, but we've got, we've got a few requests and we've got a list of other items that we've sent there, so that we are definitely, be proactive.
Along with what the mayor said is on that, we have given, through the Engineering Department, the estimates on several projects right now for the lobbyists, which include sidewalks.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm, because of the cost, I mean, we, we have, like in, in parts of Old Town, of course, we have sidewalks that are, the trees have, the roots are causing them to buckle. But we also have established neighborhoods, sort of between like Oak and, and the Chubbeck Line along Hyde and Fremont and Ammon where, I mean, it's, you could break your ankle, you know, because there, I mean, it goes from sidewalk to no sidewalk to, and I, I'm wondering, you know, maybe as with, with CDBG also focusing on that, if we could look at perhaps some of those established neighborhoods where it would be cost prohibitive, because a lot of those houses are fairly modest. Many of them have older homeowners in them. But, you know, I think, obviously Center is, is important, but again, I think it's, you know, we've got established neighborhoods, part of what used to be Alameda, you know, where we really, if it's possible to focus, I think it would be much appreciated by those neighborhoods.
We'll look at that and we have, later in the process, I've got a few other bullet points there, but we'll be working, we continually work with CD, the CDBG folks and giving them their estimates and their plans that they do every year. And we just need to make sure they're, they're in that LMI deck area, but we are continuing to work with them and we'll look at those areas.
And I don't know, again, with creative funding, you know, I don't know if there would be a way to, you know, have, have the city share in that cost and then obviously you have to pay up when it's built, I understand that, but maybe there would be a way to have a set aside fund that then the homeowner could have, you know, X number of years and it, you know, could be somehow attached to some building mechanism or other that wouldn't break the bank for them.
Yeah, I think the mechanism you're referring to is an LID. I know a lot of communities, they have really small LIDs that they do every year that kind of help aid for sidewalk projects. And I know, like as Meryl mentioned, we've done that in the past and so if that's something that the council has interest in, then that's, that's something that we can, we can look at in the future, creating LIDs for some of the big neighborhoods.
Thanks.
And then why doing that too, just to keep that in mind, looking at that, if that is the priority where we want to go, is that council would need to, like you said, find a budget and, and get us a budget in, in place so that we know what we're doing and how far we could go each year.
Claudia? I, I've never ever lived in a city where the homeowners are responsible for replacing and maintaining their sidewalk, the public sidewalk. How did that happen? How did that come about? And, and, I, I'm just, I'm very curious about that because it is a public sidewalk, but we are, but we're expecting the property owner, the homeowner, and now with more out-of-state homeowners and rental properties, I'm just curious as to if that's still the right approach or can somebody tell me?
I can mention a little bit of that because over the years, I've looked into this a few times, but I know that there are certain states that are back and forth, one that will do it. The state of Idaho is, is all that way, that the property owner is responsible. The majority of states through the Midwest and going forth and, and there that I have found, that's the way they are set up. It is because when you start looking at, I mean, we have like 260 miles of streets, times two, times all the sidewalks and stuff, is that you're never going to have a city budget that's going to be able to take care of all that. Even Salt Lake is set up that way. However, Salt Lake will, and I know that's a big one that I've looked into, they do have a, a program for raise, the cutting, you know, to making the, when it frees thaws and raises and stuff there, that Salt Lake will, has a program to help with that part of it, but it is still the responsibility of the homeowners to do that.
Because like up, up where I'm at, you know, everybody has to have trees on their sidewalk strip.
Frontage.
But then those trees get big and those trees, you know, buckle up the sidewalk. So I, I guess I'm, I'm just not understanding how all those dots connected make sense. So we're making people put in trees that we know are going to buckle the sidewalks and then we're expecting them to replace the sidewalk, which means they have to take out the trees.
The city's not requiring the trees. That's the neighborhood's CCNRs.
That's the neighborhood and the developer.
We do, we do require some in there, however, it's the street trees that we have, not like the old, old university area in downtown that you're seeing, is you've got the cotton woods, the elms and so forth. The trees that are required to be planted now, excuse me, are a smaller tree, a different root system and that. Doesn't say that there would not be that possibility, but these are less likely to cause the heaving of the sidewalks or the roots.
Okay, and Jeff had a comment here.
So just a couple comments, I agree with, I agree with Meryl, the, you know, our standards for trees are a different type of tree than what a lot of these you see down in the neighborhood, the college neighborhood and things like that that buckle the sidewalks. The second thing to consider is when you're, when you're looking at whether the sidewalks and curb and gutter are owned by the homeowner versus the community, is equity. If they were owned by the community, how do you equitatively decide who gets new sidewalk, who gets new curb and gutter and how do you, how do you, you know, divvy that up? And then third, and I think probably the biggest priority, and Jared can weigh in on this if he'd like, but his liability. So we get a lot of snow on certain years, there's issues with cracking, there's issues with spalling, and if those, those sidewalks don't get maintained, if they're owned by the city, then we would probably have to own, maintain or assume the liability and the maintenance of that stuff. And if we don't, then we expose the city to liability versus if they're owned and maintained by the property owner, that liability is on them. And so we would, so we'd assume a lot more liability on the city if we owned and maintained those sidewalks.
Thanks. And I understand what you're saying, but because I walk those, I walk, I walk a lot with my dogs and I fall all the time because we have an ordinance that says you have to shovel through your sidewalk.
Right.
But no, I mean, a lot of people don't.
Right.
So I, I, so if we're not, if we have an ordinance that says it and then we don't enforce the ordinance, then we're still assuming the liability because, because we're, we're not, we are not making sure that it's safe. So I, I don't see how it would be any different if, if it was the city sidewalk and then we still told people, you have to shovel the sidewalk. I mean, I don't see how that would be a bigger liability.
Well, again, I can address that. The ordinance, certainly we have some enforcement discretion on the ordinance, but the fact that the homeowner chooses not to comply with the ordinance and doesn't shovel the sidewalk, that's where the liability would still stay with the homeowner, not with the city for having the ordinance, but we may or may not fully enforce. So I agree, there's a possibility that somebody can make the argument that the sidewalk ordinance is in place and that we're not forcing people to shovel their sidewalks, but really the fact would be the fact that the homeowner didn't comply with the ordinance by not shoveling the sidewalk and therefore the liability would still rest with the homeowner in most cases. That would be like saying that because somebody sped and caused an accident, the police are responsible because they didn't stop him from speeding.
No, that's not, that's not an analogy.
Because we can actually enforce the sidewalk ordinance at times. There, we've had cases where people have not shoveled or they put things in the street and we have, there have been some cases of enforcement. So it's not like we just totally ignore it. We remind every winner that it's the citizen's responsibility to remove the snow from their sidewalk, not put it in the street, all those types of things. So there's definitely some enforcement that takes place.
Well, and then imagine also if the city owns them and has to maintain the sidewalks and everything, imagine the street department budget, what, what the cost to the taxpayers would be unbelievable.
Well, but I mean.
To try to, to literally try to keep those cleaned and cleared and taken care of and maintained, it would, it's just, would be cost prohibitive.
Well, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that the city would have to, you know, get a sidewalk plow to, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. What I'm talking about is I just don't understand how, if, we're, we're replacing the sidewalks now. The city's doing it. Meryl's doing it.
As, as we can with projects.
Using grants, right. So what, what, I, I mean, I guess I just don't understand why we're still pretending that it's the responsibility of the property owner when the property owners aren't doing it, the city's doing it.
I don't think they're pretending it is. It definitely is the responsibility.
And the majority.
But it's not, but they're not doing it, the city's doing it.
I don't think there's any pretending there and many, many do, so.
The majority of, like I said, the states that I've looked at, at different ones, that I'm dealing with through the Midwest and the- I'm dealing with through the Midwest and the center of the U.S. is that's the way it's set up. I would emphasize too, what Jared said, is we do, and I mentioned that earlier, we do have the code enforcement issue within engineering for sidewalks. When it's brought to our attention that there is, you asked about the liability and that. When something is brought to our attention, we send out the letters, we have our right of way inspector and myself, and we get involved, we send them a letter and require that to be repaired and stuff. So for that liability purpose, once it's brought to our attention by a report or something, then we, a formal action, then we act upon that.
Chris?
Yeah. How do we or could we, when a new development is built, can part of the approval process or is part of the current approval process, making sure that if they're going to require trees that are planted in the sidewalk strip, that they're not trees that are going to then, you know, penalize the homeowner at whatever point in time? I mean, do we, do we have, I don't know, I keep looking around because I don't know.
We have the tree, we have the tree ordinance and our tree list that they can choose from.
Okay.
Yes, that that's already in place and that's the ones that we have. So we have the little booklet and the tree list and everything.
Great, great. So just because I love oaks and I'm a developer, it doesn't mean I can make everybody plant an oak tree.
No, they cannot.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Merrill.
Okay, we'll continue. So thank you for that discussion. Another project that we're doing right now is the Old Town Trail between First and Second and north of Benton. And you've heard of that, you'll see it come forward, we have a bid opening shortly. We are working with that project and possibly funding, if we don't have enough with CDBG to connect the sidewalk underneath Benton, that area is not there. So there's another thing, how we move our projects and try to look at the surrounding areas and how to expand stuff. So there's that. In the past three years, the engineering department, and these are some really good things, how we've leveraged this up, with staff time and $75,325 match money, we've installed 554,273 dollars worth of sidewalk and ADA ramps. And if we are awarded the requested funds for the current applications that we have, we will be able to, with staff time and $43,919 roughly, what we're saying, we'll be able to install an improvements of $339,595 worth of projects. So with these grants and what we're doing with the team is, is very important.
Ma'am?
Yes?
550 plus?
Last year, $554,273.
You said that was in the last five years?
That, not the la, that's been in the last, yeah, I'd say probably five.
It's three.
Three, three years.
Three to five years that we've done.
I just didn't catch what you said, that, okay.
So.
And then could you repeat the 100, I'm sorry, 400?
The other one, the, oh, 554,273. And then for future, if we're able to get those, we will have $339,595.
Thank you.
And we've had the discussion of how hard sidewalks are. I wanted, I wanted to just take this opportunity to, to share with you, when we're doing sidewalks, you just, there are simpler projects and big other projects, but they still take time to go out with the federal rules and the rules. For instance, 2% cross slope. If you start getting above 2% side cross slope here, there's certain disabled wheelchairs possibly, people with instability and that, you know, you're too steep. And we do have some of them in town. So we have to watch that. There's the, across driveways, if you've seen in the last probably 10 years, we've been all driveways and that, we've, before the sidewalk, the back of the sidewalk would be, keep the same elevation. But now as we go through the driveways, they're dropping down so that we can get that 2% cross slope because of the rule changes. We also have the 1 and 12 rule or the 8.33%, which is the actual ramp that can't extend on the actual ADA ramp. There's the 5% rule on other stuff, but we get very challenging in Pocatello because we're on the hillsides. And we have to get really creative and that's another reason why ramps start to get more money in there. We have to deal with drainage, we have to deal with obstructions that are in the way, either have power poles, utility poles. The way the system was set up for our stormwater system in the past, right there on the corner is our catch basin. So to do that, you have to go in and if we, if we can't put in a bi lateral or a bi-directional ramp or a single ramp, we may have to dig up the street and move that catch basin. You know, there are ways to do, you know, catch basins also have to be ADA compliant, bicycle compliant, but if they're in the ADA way, in my, my experience, those grates become almost worthless because they're so small of holes that, you know, your first little plastic bag floating through the air that drops there or leaves, the grate is worthless and that. So that's a challenge to keep things maintained and that there too, to keep the drainage. Mailboxes, you know, power poles, the trees, for instance, is a, is a challenge. So there's a lot that goes into the designs and stuff and trying to get creative. That's why you're not seeing one cookie cutter there and some of the things we've tried, now we came up with after last year with the island, Little Island in the middle, we've come up with some standards between last year and this year that is going to improve that dramatically and the aesthetics on that too.
Ma'am, could I ask you about, along these lines, the upper university neighborhood? So that's older houses.
Like Princeton, Dartmouth and that or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of up around like 18th, 19th or even maybe, yeah, around that range there. So, but a lot of those have, it's kind of sloped, but it's a very steep curb. And I noticed many of them, it doesn't drop down for their driveway and people have installed like ramps so that their cars don't bottom out when they go into their driveway. Is that a style of, oh, and the other part I was going to say is that sloping curb in many cases has kind of like caved in or there's chunks missing or something. So I'm very cautious when I'm walking in that neighborhood because it has a whole sort of unique set of issues that are different than the other buckling sidewalks from trees and things like that. But is that an older method that we don't do anymore?
We try not to, and I will address both of those issues. Over the years, there's different styles of curbs. We, you can see different ones. We've had a mountable curb that's on a slope, you have the different styles of the roll curb, and that's what you're talking about there with a lower profile to a higher profile. The older, older style, they did a lot of rolled curved higher style. Also down around off pole line, you'll see some of those too. So we go, the two that we require, that we accept now is a six inch square back curb, which is the traditional you see around City Hall and so forth. And we've been allowing in a couple of situations, the lower profile roll curb, but it still has to contain enough for the drainage because you always have to worry about drainage and coming in and that and trying that the nuisance flows and so forth. With that, there's different criteria with sidewalks, six inches, so there, you got people parking on it. So there's rules there also. Now as far as the ramps, those are a very big hindrance in maintenance. And, and we've been getting rid of.
Stop water flowing?
Yeah, they stop water, they plug up. You've got ones that when we do street maintenance, that if the concrete, they, they just come in and pour the concrete in, they're solid. We rip those out and everything. The only one that we, and I know they're out there, again, this is a code enforcement, the only one that we are actually allowing when people contact us to what it is, is a steel plate. And that steel plate has to be anchored down also. That way, if something happens, that steel plate could be lifted or moved and then with the steel plate also, it gives us enough volume, mostly volume, I guess, underneath the curb and that, so the leaves don't stack up and that. So when you see those others, they're not approved except for the steel plate is the only one that the city has accepted.
Okay, thank you.
Roger Bell. One of the reasons for some of that design, I know in my neighborhood, there were a couple houses flooded because the volume of water that came down made it jump the curb.
Yes.
And you would never expect you should have flood insurance on a steep hillside, but there were two houses I know on the curve of the road where it just jumped the curb.
And it does that. Now we, in new construction, we really try to watch that the last few years and with the technicians that are reviewing it with me and that, we try to make sure that up above there, we have maybe, you'll see a double catch basin above that, especially on your T streets. And to make sure that there's an offset enough, and we really encourage people and let them know, not to put their driveway right at the end of that T because that, that volume of water does have the potential to jump those curbs. And with ADA ramps too, and that's, that's one of the thing, meeting the ADA ramps and the standards, now we have 2% cross slopes and, and drainage, you know? You've got the federal laws and rules that we're supposed to be following and then you have the drainage. So you'll see some creative stuff there too. We try to have a common sense approach to some of this stuff too. And, and again, one case doesn't fit all and that's another challenge that we have. So, you know, with this, we've talked a little bit, I would be amiss if I did not recognize, we have our engineering technicians that help with these designs, they help with this, they, they have to know the rules and they come and we talk about the rules and try to implement things. We have a terrific right of way inspector that constantly is for code enforcement versus what's going on in the right of way and trying to make sure that things are done correctly. There are those times that they're poured and we don't even know when we find out, he follows up. So he does a terrific job. Maggie Clark, our project manager, you know, on these projects and her, her help is invaluable to me also when we're doing these projects and stuff. So just want to let council know the terrific team that we do have, we can always use more terrific players, so just for pitch.
Just putting that out there.
But we do have the ones we have and they're invaluable at this time for me, so. To conclude, I'd just like to bring up a couple little things again with development as we move forward. Again, subdivisions, we talked about curbing, for instance, a little bit, but new subdivisions that come in, we'll either have the planter strip or the buffer strip there, and that is supposed to be five foot wide minimum, some are five to seven because of trees and the, and then the planting of the trees on the list. And, and when we do that, we require, it's a four foot minimum sidewalk. And at that time, now if you have curbside sidewalk with no buffer, what we're pushing there is to, that that sidewalk has to be a minimum of five foot. And the reason for that is because of the mailbox placement, obstructions that get placed and stuff. You need that ADA accessibility around there, whether it be a wheelchair, a blind person, and I was going to say two, two people with strollers, but that, I didn't want to say that that was a disability, but, but as you know, if you've got two people, two people that are walking side by side and that, four foot just is not enough. So with that, in our future standards that I'm hopefully going to be bringing, I would say soon, but I, because we've adopted the, we have the new Idaho Standards for Public Works Construction, the 2020 version available now, we need to go through, but one of those areas that I'm going to be asking for council approval is that all sidewalks are five foot wide at a minimum instead of four foot. And then, you know, on our collectors and so forth, Center, Clark, they are six and bigger, so for that there. So that is basically the end of my presentation, so.
Okay, we have Linda, Rick and Roger.
I just thought of another thing when you were talking about, well, anyway, thought of another question or situation. What about the people, and I've seen this happening more and more around town, and I know we have in our code, a certain percentage of your property has to be vegetation. It doesn't have to be mowed lawn, it can be other types of vegetation. But I'm curious about the people that are getting tired of messing with their mow strip and are just, they're redoing their sidewalk, but then they're paving the whole thing. So they're paving, so they get a extra wide, you know, you get maybe like 10 feet of sidewalk instead, but no mow strip. Is, what's our?
Our code and our thing there is that anything four foot or less in our area, and most of them, and that was put in probably 15 years ago, if it's four foot or less, they have the opportunity to widen that sidewalk in that area or, or do something creative as long as it's not hindering the ADA and liability for the city. We do have, if it's five foot or four foot or greater, they're not supposed to fill that in. However, you can do the rock and with vegetation and that, and like you said, the frontages, they have to have 45% vegetative cover, whether that's with the rock and the tree canopy or, or grass or flowers or anything like that. So that is, that is in our code and the planning code and so forth there too.
So the people that make it all concrete as opposed to, you know, like just filling it in with rocks or something? I mean, I know that's hard surface too, but if they make it all concrete, is that against code?
Only if it's four foot or greater.
Okay.
If it's four foot or less, then they can do that because a lot of our old town area, you've got two and a half to three and a half foot planter strips. And you look at those and I challenged somebody, and I'm going to say there probably is a few out there, that look good. I mean, to water them, you're watering the sidewalk, you're watering the road, they, they are just hard and impossible. So we've given that option that if it's four foot or less, to be able to, to concrete, concrete that in or do something else. Another challenge we have is driveway widths. We have a standard that's three, 30 foot from bottom of wing, bottom of wing of the tapers maximum. Now there are some conditions, if you have over 200 foot of frontage, there are some conditions, you can have an extra, you can, but most everything is 30 foot maximum. Now you can split that into 215, the 12 and an 18 circular or so forth too. Again, that's for, for these purposes too, for ADA, for sidewalks, for drainage, for parking on the street and so forth too. So, and through engineering, we have, have those standards too, that, that's a challenge to work with.
Okay, and let's see, who did I have? I had Rick and then Roger.
These sidewalk projects on Park and Center, are the property owners aware that this is coming? Have they been notified?
They have not been notified at this time. We are getting ready. I, we've talked to a few, I shouldn't say all of, none of them have been, there are a few that's come in and with replacement. We plan on sending out a flyer, as we've talked about putting in there, that that one is coming. And once we know construction time and that, we want a little bit more detail before we actually send something out to them. And the one on Center, we're waiting until, I guess, we get the plan and we know exactly how certain properties are going to be affected.
Roger?
I think we've dealt with some sidewalks, we, it's like everything else, they can come to us and appeal, can't they? If they want to do a wide sidewalk versus?
I guess they, I guess they could do that.
I think we've done that a couple times here.
For a wider, yeah, and we do, there's been a lot of, you know, five foot meandering sidewalks in certain developments that we've approved through the subdivision and through other methods because, you know, we don't want to be in such a tight box that we can't think for ourselves. So that a meandering sidewalks, as long as it meets the curvatures and stuff, again, for people walking and other, other things, when you, when you start putting curves and angles and things, you need to widen to make them functionable. But yes, you're correct.
Another follow up, just a comment, sometimes people want to pave those planter strips because they had cottonwood trees or elm trees and they're still depreciating, degrading down below. And the only thing you can get to keep this, keep them up is put some stuff in there and pave it over. pave it over. One of the questions I had, though, is have we given any consideration? Because I think they float concrete sometimes. It's, you know, and they cut it, and they can drill it, and they can float it.
Yes.
And and that might be a lot cheaper than putting in concrete right now for some of these sidewalks if we could, you know, just float everything up into place. At least that's something we're even.
We have, we have done that. We will allow that. There are different other techniques out there. We are where they put it down and the foam to raise. We also have tried to give the information out for the concrete cutters that come in to to bevel those edges so they meet the ADA. But we've done a few projects with that foam and where they drill and lift it. It's kind of cool to watch and that. But we do accept that if they have a contractor that's licensed and bonded to work in the right-of-way to do that. We will allow that, yes.
I think my neighbor had some of it, too.
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah. So, you know, we've been hearing about, you know, water quality and and also water quantity, frankly, and that's going to apparently, if things continue, if the weather conditions continue, that's going to be an increasingly big deal everywhere. So when we're reviewing codes, we probably need to keep zero escaping in mind. I mean, I realize you can still have zero escaping with with vegetation, but just making sure that we're not forcing people to.
Right.
Water the road and the sidewalk in order to meet those those standards because grass is really a pretty horrific thing in this part of the country to try to plant grass and maintain it and water it so it looks good is pretty wasteful.
And we do allow that zero escaping. For instance, the First American Title Company up on 15th, that's one with the zero scape and there with the there. We have ones down in Yellowstone, Mountain America and so forth, the McDonald's that we do. And if homeowners wanted to come in and do that, we have that. We don't have that, but we do have that in our code, and we do allow that to happen with the approved plan.
Actually, we have it right up here.
Oh, we did it in front of City Hall, yes.
As as new developments are built, too, I mean, it's obviously, well, I mean, it could be a requirement, but I'm just wondering what we can do to kind of encourage, you know, the that that more native and functional.
We have a whole chapter in our Port of Water Stormwater Design Manual that has to do with low-impact developments or the LIDs, not to be the local improvement districts, but that that we encourage, we don't require, but we encourage it. But we have a whole chapter on that in our manual that people are able to look at, and we always are looking for that opportunity, too, and for demonstration projects.
So as we're going forward, I'd be with the, I guess, the comprehensive plan, I'd be really interested in, we sort of had this conversation a while ago, very minimally, around septic, you know, what whether or not we can say from point X, you know, we will no longer accept septic systems within the city limits. That continues to interest me, but and I, I mean, I like encouragement. I don't like forcing people to do things, but sometimes without forcing, you can, for example, take a developer and if they, you can incentivize them for doing something. So, you know, if, you know, anyway. And I I'm very interested as we look at who we want to be as a community in 2030, 50 years in in thinking, you know, getting out of that 1950s, nice big grass lawn as though we lived in Louisiana frame of mind.
As we work through the coverage of plan, you know, those are some of the values that we will learn from the community and as we ask the questions. So as we learn about what people in the community want and then shape some of our decisions.
And what's sustainable because, I mean, our offer is not infinite, and the more large lawns we have.
Okay.
I was just going to comment on that. I mean, I agree, I think we want to encourage that kind of thinking and that approach. And and I am happy to see more and more of that, more and more people going to that. And one of the things that I like because it it's a difficult transition. And so, you know, our code requires if you have grass, you have to mow that grass. But people who want to then change to like a natural landscape and have natural grasses and have it be more wild and everything, they have to let that grass die first. And I know, I mean, I have neighbors that have done that and made that transition, and I was very glad, and that was before I was elected and on council, but I was glad to see the city working with them and not, as long as you notify the city and let them know what you're doing, and they know that you have a process and a plan and everything, they weren't being cited and harassed and, you know. So I was very glad to see that we support that process and people who want to make that transition, we we work with them and make it possible. And I think that helps encourage more people to do it, so.
We do that a lot with our code enforcement and that is giving them time, as long as they have a schedule and a plan.
Yeah.
And we're working within that. We try to work with people all the time. We don't believe in in that, and I try not to instill that in our our people, too, that, you know, that we got the iron fist, but to try to work and as long as we have that schedule and that plan and we can stick with it. One thing I did forget is that in your packet, I'm sure you've already read that, the memorandum from Maggie, kind of overview of the Center and Clark, and then the maps that were in there also. I didn't have them to present them. I figured you'd already looked at them and so forth, so.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move to Agenda Item Six, Proposed April Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Amendments. Finance Department staff will be, will present to council detailed information on proposed fiscal year 2021 April budget amendments for the public hearing to be held on April 15, 2021.
Since Merrill wanted to talk about squirrel and crow fighting in this neighborhood, I'm going to talk about Groundhog Day and in the finance, because every single time I talk about the budget, it feels like deja vu all over again to me. If you remember that movie Groundhog Day where Bill Murray woke up about 100 times, I keep feeling like, to some extent, I'm making improvements in my daily experience, the reawakening to the same dealing with. So I've got handouts, and I think it would be best if you could follow along in the handout because I've had a couple modifications since I originally sent the information to you. And I've got handouts here for staff if they'd like to get those as well. But I'm going to take you to page seven of the document titled Fiscal Year 2021 Proposed April Budget Amendments. And on page seven of that document, it shows that we have put together proposed budget amendments totaling $6,163,281. And to me, that sounds like a heck of a lot of adjustments. And it is, but I want to help you understand that actually it's not quite as bad as what it seems, and I'll tell you why. So included in that $6,163,281 are grants essentially of either grants that we've already received or we will be receiving of just under $2 million. And as an example, we've got $240,000 for the Transit Rural Fund and $281,000 for the Transit Urban Fund. Those are grants that Skylar Beebe and his staff are working diligently to make sure that the City of Pocatello receives those grants for the City of Pocatello. So when it's grant money that we're getting, it's not, we're not dipping into any of our tax money or reserves or anything of that nature. And then additionally, the fund that comes right underneath that, Science and Environment Fund, $283,000 there, those are grants that we have already received or will receive. I could talk about those grants. I don't think Hannah is here right now to talk about those, but. And then you go down to Ambulance Fund, $35,243,000. That's a contract with Vannick County that the proposal is to increase the appropriations in that fund to take into account that there's $243,000 additional revenue that was not anticipated in in the budget. And then you go down to the Zoo Improvement Fund at the bottom, $125,000 there. That was a contribution that was made by Connections Credit Union for some improvements that John Banks and his staff are working towards completing those as well. And then there is some money included in the general fund, the $1,790,000 related to CARES Act money that was received to purchase the radios for the fire department, $550,000 essentially of grant money. And then deployments that took place at the early part of this fiscal year, and I think some were at the latter part of last fiscal year, $220,000. So those are monies that we did not anticipate in the budget as received those. And additionally, one of those things that accountants love to do, I can't say that I really love to do these, but transfers between funds. So what that ends up doing is it it shows as a transfer in one fund, out of that fund, and it gets transferred to another fund. And it doesn't really result in any increase or reduction in funds or cash balance. It's just taking cash out of one fund and putting it in another fund. So included in that $6,163,000 are transfers of about $2,735,000. So then that leaves out of that, the reduction for the grants of about 1.9 and the transfers of about 2.7 million. That leaves around $1 million, $1.4 million that relates to things that had started when you had adopted the budget, construction projects that had started but didn't make their way into the budget process. And that's just because of the timing associated with that. And so the $1.4 million essentially is a reduction in fund balance. It's a lower fund balance than what was shown in the budget document that that you adopted back in August. And what constitutes most of those fund balance reductions relates to the Water Pollution Control Fund, $443,000. Those are all projects that were started right at the very end of last fiscal year, have continued on into this fiscal year, but they weren't budgeted in this current fiscal year. So that's $443,000 that essentially will reduce fund balance in that fund. The Information Technology Fund, a $55,000 reduction in fund balance. And I I only like to take credit for what I do, but in this particular case, I can't take credit for that $55,000 not being included in the budget document. It slipped through the cracks. I don't know why, but essentially, there's more revenue in the Information Technology Fund than what there are expenditures. And there's not a design to build up the fund balance there necessarily as a result of an error that was made in in the budget process. So that's $55,000 that would come out of fund balance. The biggest item that relates to a reduction in fund balance is Fund 70, and that is the Street Federal Aid Fund. It shows a reduction essentially, or it shows a proposed additional amendment or a proposed amendment of $806,177. That will actually reduce the fund balance in that fund. And there is a transfer that's being made out of Fund Three, but it's not that much. It's about $50,000 that's being made out of Fund Three. With the $50,000 and the reduction of the fund balance, that will pretty much deplete that Fund 70. There will be a minimal balance left in Fund 70. There's three big projects, or actually, there's several big projects. You've heard about some of those already, the Hawthorne Quinn Intersection, the Center Street Bridge. I've included the Clark Street pedestrian path as well, and then there's some other projects that just weren't, they weren't included in the budget when you adopted the budget. So but for those projects, we're asking you for an appropriation of those, for those projects. And those are all match monies. Those are monies that we need to spend in order for us to get grant monies from the state and the federal government. If we don't spend the money, if we don't match money on those projects, we're not going to get those projects. And then there were a couple of errors as well in the general fund. I don't know why the finance department decided to pick on the HR department. Maybe there's a little feud going on there. I'm not serious about that. I won't take credit for for this one either. But there was an $82,000 mistake in the budget, and if you look in the budget, and I know you don't have a budget to look at, but if you look in the budget, you'll see that, for instance, there was $2 budgeted in one of the line items in the HR department, and that's an item that traditionally they've spent more money than that. Again, I can't take credit for that. I can't say that I would love to take credit for it either, but I can't take credit for those mistakes. I just hope that I don't get to take credit for more mistakes coming down the pike as it relates to that. I'd be glad to go through the detail of the items that comprise the $6,153,000 if you have any questions. Staff is here. We've got staff from the fire department that could answer questions related to either the CARES Act expenditures or the deployments for fire strikes. And we've got Mr. Banks here in Parks and Recreation, if you care to ask any questions. And we've got Skyler in the back there. We've got Tom over there, Jeff here to talk about any of the street projects.
Hi.
I just wanted to take a minute to tell you thank you for continuing to live through Groundhog Day with us. I know you inherited some things that would not have been your preference, and so I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you for your efforts and acknowledge all the good work you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you. That makes Groundhog Day a little bit better.
Chris?
Yeah, I think you'll have to help me frame my questions in language that makes sense to you.
Okay.
So I I would like, maybe probably at the end of a fiscal year, I would like help in being really clear about whether or not there is exit, there is tax money that property tax, property tax money that was collected but not spent. Because, well, just because I would like to know that, because that might mean that there would be a way to, or certainly open the door to saying perhaps we need to look at reducing the tax ask in the upcoming year. And then the other thing that I would like help understanding, I think on a maybe quarterly, maybe monthly, I don't know what makes sense, is what, so we adopt a budget, and then I would like help in summarizing. So we adopt a budget, and then I would like help in summarizing where are we relative to that budget at whatever point the report is happening. So, if I'm thinking of our budget as our, I realize it includes income, but I'm really thinking of it kind of from an expense perspective. I'd just like to, either have you train me up on why I'm not looking at what you're already getting us in a way that tells me that, and we do dumb to know it, or how can I know that, you know, gosh, our budget, you know, our expenses seem to be on track or, you know, because when I tried to ask this before, it was sort of like, well, we take, we take the money and we divide it by 12. Well, I get that, except it doesn't really make sense because that's not, that's not how money gets spent. You know, you spend more on heat in the winter than you do in the summer. So I don't know. This is where, I mean, maybe we just, I don't want to take up everybody's time, but I'm just trying to get a better handle on where we are on an ongoing basis.
So, through the mayor, in answer to Councilmember Stevens' questions, and I'm sure that the rest of you have similar questions from the City Council, and believe it or not, the mayor asks me that every so often as well. So those two questions are obviously interrelated to each other. And the question is, it relates to where we're at on our property tax collections in relation to this expenditure of those property taxes. That's a little complicated, but I'll try to frame it in the future so that it makes sense within the context of, we brought in X amount of tax dollars, we brought in X amount or Y amount of fees and other revenues that aren't tax revenues, and of the tax revenues, how much do we spend or how much did we budget to spend versus how much did we actually spend? And the same would be true for the other category that I mentioned. And that really does relate to your second question, which is, at any point, take a snapshot of the fiscal year and try to determine within the context of what we budgeted or expenditures, how we're doing in relation to the off-budgeted. And you are absolutely correct. Dividing each budget line item by 12 and saying that that's the fraction of the year that we have, has been expired in relation to expenditures, that's not very accurate in most cases. And I say that because payroll, as an example, we're on a bi-weekly payroll, and that means you really need to divide it up into 26. We have positions that are open at some point in time during the fiscal year. They're vacant. They were budgeted, but we just haven't been able to fill the position. I have, in my department, I have an example of that. And I know in the case of both Police and Fire, they have vacancies there. Those two departments make up most of the payroll expenditures in the city. And then we have public works-related payroll, which is the third category, third largest category. But those kind of come in in different patterns than what a 1-12 approach could be. So I'm working on that, and I understand the question.
That's good.
I'll do the best I can without feeling like you've just reintroduced another Groundhog Day.
Not only have you explained it, I understand the question. I didn't understand the question. But not when you explained it. Patience, because I, you know, I obviously don't have that kind of finance background. It's just trying to find the language to capture what I'm trying to, what's in my head.
It's difficult to say this, but I've said it many times before. As much as people would like to think that governments should be run like businesses, to the extent that they can be, would relate to having a bottom line that you could say that's what our net amount of income is. But as a governmental agency, that's not what we're about. That's not our objective, to make net income. If we did have that as an objective, we better rethink that whole process because that's not why people pay property taxes, is to see how much net income the governmental agency has. But we have objectives that we're trying to accomplish, and we use our resources within the context of what this governing body decides they want to use those resources on, and with the priorities that you've established. And if we're not able to fund those priorities because we have a lack of revenues, you need to know that. Or if we're funding, we've got more resources than what we're able to fund, then maybe we can have some excess capacity or something.
Questions? Linda? Oh, sorry, Linda.
And I think mine's a whole lot easier, probably. I just was wondering if you could, and you mentioned, maybe all of them, I know at least a couple, but if you could just repeat or tell us what the street grant projects are.
You know what? I would love to take credit for the explanation on that, but I'm going to let either Jeff or Tom, you talk about those street projects.
So the ones that are primarily included in this budget amendment are for the Hawthorne Quinn and Center Street Project, and then the Clark Street Sidewalk Project that was just talked about by Maggie and Merrill. And then the Hawthorne Quinn and the Center Street are the ones that we talked about at council meeting last week. So those are the ones that we are trying to position ourselves to get the stimulus money and be ready to pay that match if we end up getting the stimulus money, so.
So this would be getting us ready?
This just gives us that authority to make that, to make our match on those two projects.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on what we were talking about with that 800 something. Thank you.
Got Roger, and then Chris.
So we're paying off the loan to the Street Department from the Sanitation Department three years early. So that should create a revenue source budget item?
So that's one of those things that accountants really love to have, are transfers between funds. So you have a transfer out of the Streets Fund, which has adequate cash resources to be able to repay that loan. It goes into the Sanitation Fund, but there's really no enrichment or depletion within that context. The whole city doesn't either get richer or poorer as a result of that. But the Sanitation Fund will get repaid those cash reserves that were used in order to front the money.
But if I'm not mistaken, we're using reserves to pay for what normally is budgeted on an annual basis?
We are using, I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of what you said.
I think we put aside 200 or 250.
Yes, that's correct.
We didn't, it was done before us.
That's correct. It has been, so where you're, maybe I misunderstood what you're...
Yeah, I'm saying that either if we're using reserves, and it's in the budget, that should free up some money from in the budget to sell.
So in the Streets Fund, that has been scheduled, the $250,000 transfers had been scheduled to be made over the course of the next three years. So yes, we will no longer need to make that transfer in the future, but we're depleting those cash resources in the Streets Fund now. But that won't be a commitment that we need to make for future purposes.
Now, I guess my question was, have the reserves built up to where we're doing this so the budget doesn't need to perform that way anymore? Because I think it was, in my mind, the reserves are something far different than a normal budgetary expense. This is something that accumulates on top of what you are expending.
Right.
And so if we've been appropriating 250,000 a year out of the budget, that's, should free up 250,000 within the budget this year because we're pulling it from, we're pulling it from our bank account, but our checking account's still supposed to get the income.
So, yes, that is freeing up 250,000 that will no longer need to be transferred.
And then when we move to 925,000, that will just be accessible though, right?
So built into this proposed budget is that we would transfer that from the Settlement Fund. You know, we set aside 4.5 million dollars from the General Fund. There was about 1.1 million that was spent on legal fees, and then claims were paid. And then what's left over is actually about 910,000, but there may be some interest income. I just wanted to make sure we have enough money to transfer. So we're transferring that back to the General Fund. But what the proposal shows is that we would take that 925,000 and transfer that into the Fund 78 Capital Projects Fund, instead of letting it stay in the General Fund.
Okay, so it'll be in the capital projects.
That's correct.
Which, where we can access it?
Yes. Yes.
It's been a sacred place for a couple of years, so we couldn't touch it, but now it's becoming, or we can use it again through a direct...
And I can't tell, I can't say anything as, or take any credit or do anything as it relates to how sacred that ground has been, has been laid related to that.
Yeah, well, it was sacred ground. It was sacrosanct. We couldn't do anything with it until everything was taken care of.
He's talking about...
No, I understand. There was a little sarcasm in there. I turned a little bit of sarcasm.
So if we should choose as we go through this year or into next budget year, we could appropriate some of that money for capital projects?
Yes, certainly. And just so you're aware, you did act to actually appropriate budget a million dollars to be spent out of Fund 78. At this juncture, you don't have all the projects that would comprise a million dollars worth of expenditures. So there was a million dollars that went into the fund in tax revenues. You could say, as it related to your question earlier, that we have not spent all of that tax money that went into that fund. And yes, in answer to your question, Councilmember Gray, yes, that is available for appropriation in the context of whatever the City Council decides to do.
Chris?
Yeah, so in the Fund 70 Street, is that our match?
Yes.
I mean, in general, in that Fund 70, is that the fund in which our expected required match money resides?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Used to reside.
Yeah, it won't be there, but I mean, that's where it lives if there's any available. So, I am, I don't remember, which could be that I just flat don't remember, or wasn't aware or not, but I don't recall us having any organized, specific line item set aside for anticipated, you know, match, I mean, based on our history, and I realize with $40,000, everything. But I'm interested in things like, sort of, what, cashman fund accounts, like capital improvements, like the General Fund, like department reserves. They, it seemed to me that they, money accumulates in those a bit accidentally. And I'm wondering, I don't need an answer now, but I'm just wondering if that's the best bet. I've been part of other large organizations where there was literally an annual set aside to replenish those funds with...
So, in communities past, for me, so I'm having another Groundhog Day here, there were sufficient resources to allow for some fairly significant set asides for replacement of capital facilities. An example would be, I have not researched to find out how much City Hall costs initially, this City Hall, but at some point in time, believe it or not, this is going to need to be replaced. We've got other major facilities that are going to need to be replaced.
We've been replacing it about 15% a year.
Yeah. So, in other states, it's a little bit easier to build up some reserves for that purpose. I think this city has done a pretty good job, prudent job, of trying to set aside some resources to deal with infrastructure replacement as well as new infrastructure, both. And to do both is almost impossible, but with an organized plan, as you've said, and there is a plan. I can't profess to understand the math, other than I do know how to add and subtract and divide and multiply. And I know that Tom has put together a methodology by which, at least in the case of providing matching monies for street projects, so we're taking some money out of the Street Fund, $80,000 plus a year, and Tom does the math, divides out what he anticipates the future projects over the next five years are going to be, and then figures out what the transfer amount should be to get us to a balance that would sort of be like a perpetual balance in that fund. The design was, is to have about a million dollars available so that when a project comes along, like the ones that we're looking at right now, and these projects came along because we weren't spending, we weren't planning on spending that money until another two or three years from now, but we jumped ahead in the process because we believed they were good projects, and we believed that the money was available now, and we should take advantage of it while we could. So that's why that got depleted. But if we do our job right, we should be able to keep balances within the context of what Idaho law says we can do. And that's an ever-changing dynamic there that we need to pay attention to. But we just can't build up reserves. It's not...
So I don't remember, Tom, for example, I mean, the money that Jim is referring to would have, would have been just part of operational. So just, maybe nobody else cares, but for me, I, and again, I don't, and this isn't a false statement, I'm, it's just that I'm trying to understand. I would like to have that kind of money in whatever department it might be, be carved out, be designated, just because, again, it helps me understand how to put all the parts together and build a concept of the larger budget. And I don't know if that's an unreasonable request, from a departmental point of view or not.
And we do that in our, in our street budget, the 003, we have a line item set aside for the Fund 70 transfers.
Right.
And like Jim explained, we try and look at our 10-year forecast and set that money aside to build up that balance. One of the tricky things that we, that really muddies that water is this $250,000 salary transfer. You've got 250 coming in, 250 going out, it just muddies the water. And so we were hoping that we got to this point that we could pay that off early and then try and use that money to build that fund balance back up to kind of give it a head start.
Right, right. But what I'm trying to avoid is this idea that we're making large expenditures, and I'm not referring to streets outside the budget, because if we, if we have a set aside that essentially plans for these unexpected expenditures, then to me, that's within the overall budgeting, and it's not putting us in a position of saying, oh my gosh, yes, we have 500,000 now, so let's take advantage and spend it, but oh, by the way, Lord knows what's coming in in three months, and maybe I'm going to have buyer's remorse and say, whoa, you know, based on whatever, what's coming in in the new budget cycle, I wish that I hadn't voted yes on that 500,000.
So, you know, I don't want to beat this horse to death, but the bottom line is that we have acted prudently, and I can't take credit for it because I'm only a small part of the prudent activity that's occurred over the last couple of months. But prior, you set a fund balance policy that you have a 25% fund balance objective in all of your operating funds. fund balance, uh, objective in all of your operating funds. At the same time, you don't necessarily have a capital outlay objective where you're trying to build up replacements for different assets, so it's a little tricky within that context, and it is a dynamic process. But I would say this, I, I think that fund balance policy that you have could probably be augmented just a little bit to take into account what, what Chris is saying as far as having some designations or some reserves, that you know what those are for, you're anticipating that you're going to have some capital projects, or you may not know exactly what those capital projects are or other projects, but you want to start setting aside money for those.
Okay, other questions? Okay. Jim, thank you. With that, then we'll move to agenda item seven is a fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget process update. Staff will be present to update the council on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget process. And, uh, council, I have Jim in here to answer, answer a number of questions that I know you're going to have. We've come, run into a situation in the city where, um, we're going to have to do some things that are uncomfortable for me and for Jim and probably for the entire council, but, uh, we have got, uh, Jim came to me last week and expressed some concerns that he has. He is three months behind on an audit that, um, has not been performed by the city, our CAFER. Should be done now, uh, we're in the process of starting it. And as he looks at the budgeting process, uh, moving forward every week, um, spending a, a day in here every week, he doesn't have time to do the things that we have historically done. And so, uh, the budgeting process, the, what we're going to have to do this year, and I'm hoping that we never get down this road again, and I'm hoping that this works out the way it pencils out for us, as we're still penciling it out, we are going to send a service level report for fiscal year twenty to the entire council for you to be able to look at. We will do that electronically, we'll have it, uh, also available with a paper copy if you're interested. We're also going to, uh, get you, Chris, what you're asking for, the year-to-date information for FY twenty-one, so you'll know what the budget, where we are with the budget for this year as we're moving forward, as, as we're going into this process. And then we're going to also get you the five-slide presentation that Jim talked about, um, for FY twenty-two. And that, that presentation, so you should get a packet of all of those things so that you can look and review all of those things. There will be, uh, they will all be consistent, uh, in a template that's very consistent so that you're not trying to figure out, okay, which was this, was this one, this or that? They're all the same. So hopefully that makes it a little bit easier. Uh, we will have that to you. My hope is going to be by the end of this month, the end of the last week in April, the first week in May, so that you have that. Now, Jim might have to step in and, and correct me on some dates as we've been looking at, at some dates. We will then take, uh, a couple of weeks, give you a couple of weeks, two, maybe three weeks to be able to review that, go through that, write down questions, write down concerns, write down anything that you have that, uh, we need to be able to, to address in a budgeting process. We do have some big questions and there's some things that we have to, we have to do as a council. I have to get your, uh, opinions on revenue sources, that, that is scheduled. Jim, is that for May sixth?
Yes.
Or is that for April, the end of April?
Uh, May sixth would be my preference on that.
So I'm going to, I want to get the, you the packet before May sixth, but on May sixth, we will have to have a meeting where we will go over a number of things, um, things, revenues that we're doing. We'll also discuss, uh, this is a year that we have to discuss, um, the only time we can really discuss, uh, council and mayor's benefits and pay. And so we will discuss those then and we'll move, move along. I've got to work with our legal department to, and our clerk to get a, um, special session with the council to discuss some union negotiations. I'll try to do that all in the same day on May sixth, but, um, I'm hoping to be able to, to do that. We, we need to do. We will then, if we can get those things to you toward the end of May, um, the first of June, and there again, I'm going to be pushing for May before June, uh, we will start to have, uh, probably, I'm going to have to ask you to spend two days a week if we have to, to go over a budget to Jim, and I will, um, prepare a recommended budget for you so that you can look at it, you can go through it, we'll give you that sooner than later so that when we are meeting together, we can, you can pick it apart, basically. I would hope that we would be able to get a budget that's put together that isn't picked apart too much, but I also am a realist and know that that is not going to happen. But there again, any questions that you have, the big questions you have for departments, if you'd please send those to Jim so he can send them out to the departments so that the departments can get an answer for you. I would like to have our departments come in and present or just answer questions from what you form, um, we'll, we'll give them probably about a fifteen-minute time period if we're going to do this in a timely fashion. As I've looked back, August fifth is the first public hearing we have. So two weeks before that, we have to have a published bid. Is it two weeks, Jim?
Uh, actually, the notification issue is such that we need to have a seven-day period between the two notifications, and that's really the only requirement that we have.
So, so we'll have to have it, so two weeks ahead of that, we'll have to give our first notification and publication. Seven days after that, you'll have to notice, notice it and publish it again, which pushes, puts us at July sixteen. And so before July sixteen, we will have to have an agreement from the council on what the budget is for us to publish. We will put the departments in front of us. After those departments are, have all gone through, we will ask, I will be asking you, uh, probably within that week for any additions that you might have, some, some thoughts that you want to make sure that we have in the process. I have it written here, and then guidance that you, that you have for, for us so that Jim and I can change that budget. We'll bring it back to you one last time before the sixteenth so that we can make that, uh, make that happen, uh, and, and everybody will be on, and everybody will at least be able to see that. I do have, down here, I wrote down that I didn't have on my list, our nonprofits' applications. I want to get those out to the nonprofit groups and back so that you have them before June, so that you have an opportunity to take a look at them and weigh in on, on them. And if there's any other questions there again, please, I'm going to ask you to send those questions to Jim so that Jim can get those to, uh, the nonprofits and he can get all the questions to everybody. Hopefully it'll speed this process up. I, um, I, I don't think Jim, nor I anticipated this being the case at all until Jim realized where we are in, in our department right now. I'm just grateful that we've got Jim that, that can say, all right, look, I need this to happen so that we can move forward. And so, yes, Chris?
So, um, I, I know one of the things that's going to be important to me, and with all due respect to Heather in the HR, you know, and I always want to call it ripple, and it's not ripple. Um, the, so whatever that, you know, what you're talking about, if, if entity X gets an increase, then it goes, um, you know, to across the board. And, and so I continue to be very interested in, uh, in, in at least making a start in which positions are, is every single position in this city underpaid or overpaid at the exact same amount? Or do we need to be approaching things differently so that we get people to equity and then we can ripple or roll or whatever it's called from there? Because I, I just remain very unsure that every single position in this city is where, where every position is.
So, and, and Heather doesn't know this yet, and she's probably going to throw something at me. Does she have anything? At that special meeting on May sixth, I was going to ask Heather to come and help us understand that very thing. I know she's been working with five or six different cities across the strait, the street, the state to be able to kind of give us some comparisons. I know that that probably will not be complete. She's working with five or six different HR directors to do that, but I was going to visit with her actually later this afternoon and see if she could get us something to try to at least help us in that mindset, but I think that's a concern that everybody has.
Thanks.
So, uh, it's not great news, but it is where we are right now, and we are, so you know, we are reaching out to get some outside help with the audit and with the CAFER. It's just a matter of our, uh, of being able to get that wrapped up and, and get that done. And so, I'm hoping and praying that next year we don't have to do this. I, it's, it's an uncomfortable position for everybody.
So I have a question.
Yes.
If we're going to go to two times a week, is that going to be like Tuesday, Thursday?
It'll be like Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay. And if we're going to go two times a week for the month of May, or June, I've lost it already, June.
June.
Then that'll still be eight sessions, which is not foreign, it's not uncomparable to what we've done before.
So, that, that's a good point. I hadn't talked to Jim about that two times a week yet. I was just trying to figure out and make sure that we have the time that you need and get you the information that you need so that we can do, get the budget put together the way it needs to be. It may not be two times a week. If we don't have to, it'd be great, but...
We, we, we've done budget, you know, a lot faster than last year at times, and it just depends on how things fall in place, it depends on what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
So I've seen, uh, budget sessions, uh, the community I came from previous to this where we spent one afternoon going over the budget, and the majority of that was related to community organization grants, uh, but it was a very organized approach which included, as I've said, five slides for each department. And I haven't really developed the template that I'm going to give to the departments yet, but, um, I wanted to hear what you had to say here today first. But, um, I can see where if we stick to the five slides and if we, uh, the mayor indicated a fifteen-minute per department, I, that may be a little optimistic. I think just within the context of how things usually work, it's probably, it's going to take longer for some departments, but I don't envision that that would be any issue. Uh, you know, your appetite for, for budget information is only curbed by your ability to digest all that information. So if you try to digest it too soon, you might have a regurgitation that takes months. So, uh, you know, we want to give you the opportunity to digest it, and that has to do with the departments, um, providing information that we can give to you in advance.
I have no ambition to do what pre, councils previous to my time. They took the whole budget line item by line item going through. I, I don't want to do that, but I need to know that, uh, the headings, how, how they're arrived at, you know, I don't mean to do lineups, but I mean the headings and how we're, the major headings and how, how they project.
My anticipation is you're going to get a, a document in the slides that shows essentially those headings for each department and each, maybe each division within each department, and then personnel numbers as far as total number of people. Uh, and then after that would follow some information from, as the mayor mentioned earlier, um, our service levels report with some objectives, uh, things that are happening this year that haven't happened in the prior years, things of that nature, and then some variance information, what's up dollar-wise from the prior year and things of that nature. But it'll give you, but at the same time, we're going to give you a line item budget, and it's up to you to decide whether you want to get into that.
In my mind, the largest thing we've got to do is get the personnel together, and once we've got that together, then that has its ramifications whether we add in departments and things like that. That's, that's the biggest thing because we've got more outlay in that area than anywhere.
Yeah, we would agree with that, Roger. Claudia, go ahead.
So, I, I have a question. So this audit is, are we three months behind because we didn't have a gym?
Yes.
Okay. And then my comment is, is yes, I would prefer to have this stuff electronic.
Okay.
And then I'll decide what I need printed or, I, I just don't need, you know.
Yeah.
Twelve reams of paper and, you know.
That's what I figured. Last, I looked at our budget from last year and I literally had two, I think they're six-inch binders completely full of paper and stuff. And so if we can get it electronically, it would, I think it'll be easier for everybody to know.
I'm just going to take the mayor's binders and put a new date on it and save it.
No, we're not going to do that.
Well, somewhere it'll be stored on a computer.
Absolutely. Chris?
I can only speak for myself, but I, I mean, I don't, I don't find, um, the information you've shared, I mean, I want us to be on time and all of that, but, but I don't find it particularly upsetting or frankly, um, very, uh, I mean, it's not coming in from left field. I think it was pretty obvious that we were behind the eight ball for reasons that were nobody's particular fault. So I, again, just speaking for myself, I'm not, I'm not put off balance in any way, shape or form or...
Well, I, I will tell you, council, I have literally lost sleep over this because it does vary from what we've done in the past, but I also think that it might get us information sooner than we've had before, and it gives us more time to look at it and...
Change is good.
Necessity is the mother of invention. That's right.
That's true.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment, is I actually think this gives us an opportunity to be more efficient and to, instead of, oh, trying to remember back from a couple of weeks ago what this department said, and now I'm weighing that against this, it's, I think it gives us a great opportunity to be more efficient. We're not taking a lot of, like, uh, Councilmember Bray said, especially even last year, we kind of went long and had a lot of questions and sometimes tangents and things like that, you know? And so if we don't have to make all of the staff sit through and, um, listen to every question, I think that helps us be more efficient and, and I'm all for that.
Would it be appropriate for me to ask the, the chief a question, and is everyone going to go to Jim?
Absolutely.
I'd much rather have you ask.
I'm just wondering where we are on the whole, uh, the whole USAR situation and conversations?
Yeah, come up here because this is going to take you a minute to...
Um, and then a question that, you know, probably could just be emailed out is kind of where we are with SROs and crossing guards, um, you know, from the police department vis-à-vis that those conversations that we're bringing in.
I'll have the chief, uh, he's not here right now, I'll have him answer that and email that to us.
Then that doesn't have to be a topic during these more confined...
Some of those things might be...
Mayor, council, so I've done a lot of research.
What's that?
I have to say that in terms of, especially fee payments, uh, it's not the standard. There are some departments, um, I have, there's one in Idaho, it's NAPA. NAPA does charge a fee for confined space. It's an optional fee, it is not a required fee. Um, it's inconsistent in terms of how... It's inconsistent in terms of how they determine that fee. I don't want to go into too much, I'm in the process of writing a report, but they really, I'll give you an example, and this is actually really ironic to me. On Semiconductor resides here, it resides in Napa, Idaho, and it resides in Portland, Maine. They actually have facilities in those three locations. Ironically, I know I, the first place I found in the nation that had a fee for confined space service was Portland, Maine. And they did it by the number of confined spaces a entity had. On Semiconductor in Maine, Portland, Maine, for them, if I were to protract how many, how much I would bill On Semiconductor in Portland, Maine was $78,000 annually. It was a lot of money. Guess what? On Semiconductor in Portland, Maine chose to stand up their own internally confined space system. Here, we don't charge a fee. We have been providing the service for them, and there's no fee. In Napa, Idaho, their fee is quite a bit less than $78,000 a year. It's in the round of $8,000 in a year. But the cost to stand up a team themselves is about $50,000 if they want to stand their own team up. So at some point, it's kind of like, if you start to encroach that $50,000 mark on a regular basis, then pretty soon the business decision becomes, well, it's a lot cheaper for me to stand up my own team. I think it's important to understand that it's still a service that's expected of a community. Whether we provide or whether we are an OSHA-certified team for them, we are still, I call ourselves a silo community. There is no community close to us that could provide that service. The next closest would be Idaho Falls. So if we have somebody stuck in a confined space or do a rope rescue, somebody, we use rope rescue all the time to retrieve people that have gone off of an embankment, if that makes sense, you know, their car goes off an embankment, well, we need rope rescue to go get that person up the embankment safely. So we're going to do that no matter what. And so these services that we do, and ultimately, we are capturing some state revenue, we're supplementing that state revenue. Chief O'Hern was here before you with no-match grants the last couple of times. We supplement our rescue team with that. For the simplicity of it, I would tell you, I would advise you that it's not worth our time right now to do this. The administration, we don't know how many confined spaces, and I feel like it's better to just continue with what we're doing. And it's a relatively small amount of money, but we would have to be doing it regardless of whether we do confined spaces.
And I don't recall what that amount of money is, like for the training, for the certification, for the equipment, for the whatever, whatever.
It's, I believe if I recall, it was about $32,000 we would save if I just suspended this process. But that means I would have to suspend it altogether. We would no longer provide this to anybody. And the problem is, it's all wrapped into each other. When you talk about a technical rescue, it is rope rescue, it is confined space, it's trench rescue, it's collapse. We use collapse all the time. We have a car that runs into a structure on Main Street, and that structure becomes unstable. The skills we've learned in that collapsed structure class helps us realize how to stabilize that building to make it safe while people work around it. So...
Jared, is a city allowed to do a suggested donation, so to speak?
That's the first I've heard of a mandatory yet optional fee. I don't know how they structure that. We're always willing to accept donations, right? So we could always...
Because I, I don't think it would be amiss, and the folks that clearly know that they're getting a good deal here, even though it's not amounting to, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. But I don't think it's amiss to suggest to a local entity, and I keep saying on because I don't know who else, so I don't want anybody to think I'm picking on them because I'm not. But I don't think it's amiss to suggest that, you know, if they wanted to assist the community in an appropriate manner, because they do, they can't sign off on their OSHA forms, you know, based on the generosity of the community, that they might want to make a, whether it's to the zoo or it doesn't necessarily have to be to the fire department, but I think a suggested donation concept might work.
My only concern is that it would be interpreted as, are you suggesting a donation so that you'll provide these services? Or are you really going to just provide the services regardless of what we do with that suggestion?
Well, I think...
So we have to be very careful with that so that it doesn't come off as some sort of...
Oh, I think to me, it would be just straightforward, which would be like, look, you're going to get this anyway, and as a member of the community, you could really help support, you know, our fire department or whatever. You know, that means it...
That's above my prerogative, so...
You know, carrot, it's not a stick, it's a carrot.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Jared, a quick question in regards to the budgeting process and things like that. Open meeting law concerns, any concerns that we need to think of?
No, I'll come up to the microphone. No, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things to keep in mind as we go through this. Obviously, there's some adaptations that are being discussed with the budgeting process, but the transparency and the open meeting law compliance is first and foremost. So one thing you'll have to remember is if there are questions, as we were reviewing that significant amount of material, those need to be directed directly to Jim or the department head or to the mayor, but not to the council as a whole, just to remember to avoid deliberation outside of a meeting.
So I want to correct him, I want them all directed to Jim so that they're not scattered throughout. Let's, please direct them to Jim. Jim can direct them to the department heads if we can do that.
But unless it's a question you feel the council needs to consider, make, if that's the case, that needs to be on a council, at a council meeting, at an actual meeting that's noticed and everybody gets to have that discussion. But if it's just you as a specific council member that has that question, make sure you just email Jim, you don't send it through the whole council, you don't reply all on questions or on information that you receive via electronic email. And then some of these large amounts of information that you'll be receiving, I'll visit with the mayor and Jim about that, and we'll kind of work those case by case. But there might be a time when we just need to call a special meeting, make that information part of that special meeting distribution. It's part of the public record and you receive it. We don't spend five, six hours going through those slides or those things, but it might be something that needs to be received at a meeting just so that we're as transparent as we always are and we continue down that path with no problems. That's all I have, unless you have questions related to this new possible format and how it might relate to the open meeting law or anything else. Just wanted to keep that reminder at the forefront of your minds.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, thank you. And there again, maybe this will be a great process. It's just, I've lost a lot of sleep over it, and I know it goes away from what we've done in the past, but hopefully we get the information sooner and we actually are able to put a budget together that's a good, solid one. Thank you for that and then for your work today. With that, if there's no other questions, we are adjourned.